I'd like to call our meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag to the United States of America and to the Republic which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, on behalf of our Planning Commission, welcome to our Planning Commission meeting for October fourteenth, 2025. So, this would be the latest possible date we could have a Planning Commission meeting. Because our meetings are on the second Tuesday of every month. So, we're on the fourteenth, so they can't be later. There's only four. Anyways. So, welcome to our meeting. For those of you that have not been with us in the past, our typical operating procedure is to look to our staff, our planner and our engineer to give us an overview of the applications. They'll describe the background and that sort of thing. Look to the applicant for their input. Invite comments from anyone in the audience that has comments. The Planning Commissioners will ask questions as we're going through it and we'll render a decision on the application. So, our first item is an administrative item, which the Planning Commission meeting minutes that were held on, for the meeting held on September nine, we need to get approval for those.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the minutes as submitted for the meeting of September ninth.
Okay, I have a correction.
Okay.
And I don't know what I did with my notes. I have them right here. Okay, thank you. Yes.
I'm looking in your pile. You've probably got it written down, right?
Well, you know what? No, no, this is good. It's good. No, no, it's good. I think I got that line. Yep, last time.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve. Need us?
Aye, second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, our first item is the Planning Commission will consider the request of the property owner at 180 High Oak for site plan approval for a new office building. And so, this matter was in front of us in August. And the commission had comments and the applicant has revisited and reviewed the comments and made some changes. And so, Eric, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm under the Planning Commission. My name is Eric Peach. You're both Webster. This is planning consultant. Our first item for discussion today at 180 High Oak Road. This is for a site plan approval and a number of other planning commission related items that we'll go over throughout the presentation here as well. For beginners, this is located within the O one zoning district. So, the O one standards of the ordinance apply. The location is at the southwest corner of East Long Lake Road and High Oak Road, just across the street from us here. And applying the yard determination graphic, the lot is somewhat unique in the sense that it is a backwards L shape. And it has two front yards located along Concord Road to the south and then High Oak Road to the east. Starting in green is front yard. The proposed new building is on the north side of the L-shaped parcel. And then to the south is an existing building that proposes a small addition within the setback to its south side. So, as we go through, this is just a zoomed in version of the existing building. This portion here is going to result in an addition within the setback. To give you just a snapshot of the different items that are before the Planning Commission and eventually approved before the zoning board of appeals. So, we have five different items in addition to the overall site plan, first being the location of the loading zone. So, that's in this location here for the southern building. Parking reduction. So, we'll go over the details in just a moment. But overall, the site is short, 12 spaces. But in this location here, there's proposed banked parking to make up for those 12 spaces. The design standards of the ordinance, there's materials that are proposed and that were presented to the Planning Commission at previous meetings. The landscape plan is an item that's required of the Planning Commission. And then the screening of the site at the southwest side in that area. So, it's everything that's in red that the Planning Commission is going to be looking at further detail into today. And then if it moves on to the zoning board of appeals, that body will be looking at the algebraic setback of the proposed new building along Long Lake Road. The building complies with the setbacks, except for the algebraic formula when applied. There is a portion of the building that falls a little bit short of that analysis. So, then number two, the minimum setback for the addition. Over here, the existing building just so happens to be within the setback. So, they propose to enclose a parking area underneath the second story of the building. And so, by doing that, there's a little portion of the new construction that will fall within the setback. The third item is for front yard loading. Where are we at here? So, in this location in front of the building, they designate the space for the required loading zone. But there's, you know, some obstruction of the maneuverability within the parking lot. So, that's technically a request to the zoning board for that dimensional standard. And then this should actually be changed because it's, you'll see on an updated plan that the new location for the north building is a loading zone in approximately this location. But we'll go over that in just a second. So, this was last reviewed by the Planning Commission and presented to the Planning Commission in August, so two months prior. And the result of that meeting was for a tabling for the applicant to consider additional information. We, along with the city engineer, had met with the applicant either at the very end of August or the early days of September to go over those concerns. And so, this is a synopsis of the result of those items that we'll go through within this presentation. So, there are six different items. The additional ADA parking spaces was requested by the Planning Commission. So, they included additional handicap parking spaces. Vehicle turning templates was a request. We have those that we'll go over in a moment. Enhanced screening of the walkway and glass barrier wall. So, as you recall, views into the property from High Oak, there was concerns for adequate screening in that location. So, there was enhancements made to that. The roof planter box detail, this new building has a green roof on its roof. And so, there was a request for more details in regards to the planter boxes so that it would help screen that open area on the top. And then the screening of the south building's mechanical units. So, with the improvements being made to this building, there's mechanical units on the top and elevations were requested of this building. So, on those drawings, you'll see that there's a material called out for the screening of those existing mechanical units. And then lastly, the addition of a loading zone to the north building. As I mentioned, it'll be approximately in that location towards the entryway. So, going through those six items, these next few slides will give you a little bit further insight as to what was changed. So, the additional ADA parking spaces, those will be located here. So, as you enter the site from High Oak, this is the ramp down underneath the building. So, guests will park on the main level, on the surface level, underneath the building. And then there's two handicap parking spaces designated towards the back, closest to the door, main entry, the vestibule in this area here. So, this is the location of the proposed designated loading space for this particular building. The applicant's here and can discuss more about the dimensional standards related to that. It was the most ideal place for a loading area because it was determined that this type of building will not require larger vehicles for delivery and whatnot. So, we tried to maximize the amount of space here when working with the applicant, not to block any of the driveway or the ramp down underneath the building or any of the parking spaces on the surface of the site or any obstruction of the solid waste dumpster location towards the property. That same detail on, for the south building, we have highlighted in blue the additional handicap parking spaces as well. So, these exceed the number of handicap parking spaces required for this portion of the development. And then, of course, the location of the loading zone meets the dimensional standards, but location wise, it's in a front yard and there's some, you know, obstruction of the maneuverability within the lot. So, that's an item that I'll go before the zoning board of appeals. So, these are the turning templates. They're here for visual representation. We did go over with the applicant that the dimensions do meet the standards for maneuverability underneath the building. The applicant can speak more to that as we go through the plans. But this is a representation of showing two vehicles on the ramp at the same time. So, this is the underground depiction. And then this would be from the surface level, two vehicles being shown passing by on a 20-foot wide ramp down. But there's a unique way of controlling traffic in and out of the garage by way of a traffic light that is triggered by a sensor that only allows vehicles to maneuver through that portion of the building in the ramp at a single time so that there shouldn't be any conflicts with the way that vehicles traveling in different directions encounter passing each other. And then again, this is just showing additional maneuvering standards that the applicant can speak to. Down here, you'll notice this is underground. For these three spaces here, there's this green shaded area that will allow for those vehicles to back out so that they can head out of the garage facing forward. So, there's, we believe, adequate maneuverability down here in the lower level of the garage. The roof planter box detail, we received with confirmation to be approximately four feet, eight inches in height. So, the concern over this was just that this area of the roof of the building would help to screen any activity for patrons to be on the roof or employees of the building to be on the roof, that the height would be of a sufficient screening effort from the applicant. So, that amounts to about four feet, eight inches in height. So, we'll go through some of the enhancements to the color renderings. These next few slides will show one of the standards or one of the items for the applicant to have addressed from the Planning Commission's last meeting was for additional screening in this location. Because behind here, you have that glass barrier that protects the down ramp from pedestrians on a walkway in this location as well as enhancements so that there's additional screening so that you can't see through and beyond to the parking area in the back. So, this was raised from, I can't remember what the previous height was, but these are a Hixu, a species of hedge that's been raised to five feet in height. So, these images will show what that is intended to look like when constructed. So, you can see here, there's a car going down the ramp. This is High Oak over here. And this is the hedge that's intended to screen. And then this is the same hedge, five feet in height. This is the main entrance to the building. So, just beyond here in the back are the two ADA parking spaces. And then this is the picture showing the enhanced height of five feet compared to the previous version shown here with the hedge. So, you can see that there was the intention to increase the screening for that area. And then if you look here, this is that mechanical, technical piece of equipment, so to speak, to help guide and dictate the traffic coming in and out of the garage. So, again, the loading zone, this is just from the previous presentation showing the location adjacent to the existing building. We have gone through the full parking analysis. So, ultimately, the site as a whole will be short 12 spaces. And so, when the north building is constructed, they will comply, or this building will comply with its required parking, parking requirements. But ultimately, altogether, when this building changes its use from strictly office to office medical, that bumps up their parking requirement. So, they're, by doing so, they're required additional spaces. And so, instead of building those, the applicant has a parking study that shows that the amount of parking that they're proposing is sufficient. But they are demonstrating that they do comply with the ordinance requirements for the bank spaces. So, they're short 12 spaces, but if these spaces were ever constructed, there's 12 spaces located there, they would fully comply with the ordinance. So, it's the parking situation as proposed that requires planning commission's oversight and approval. So, this is just a more detailed version of that. So, 36 parking spaces will be maintained in the existing parking lot. And then over here on the side of the site, the parking was designed deliberately so that there was no encroachment into the front setback here. So, they shifted some original spaces that were located here further back. And again, these are bank spaces. So, they would only be constructed if deemed necessary. So, the design standards of the ordinance, the applicant had explained the types of materials that are being used. So, we won't go into detail on that with this presentation. But if there's any questions, the applicant is here to address those. One of the other items for planning commission's consideration, this is more of a technical element of the ordinance that states that where there's a proposed parking area adjacent to another property's parking area, that that needs to be screened. And so, in this situation, you can see that the existing parking, the parking layout drifts away from the site. So, there's only a small little portion of existing parking here. So, the applicant provided landscaping in the green area. I think I lost my pointer. The green area on the right-hand side of the screen is some landscape screening. The ordinance requires a buffering if that standard is strictly applied. But that would be per the planning commission's determination regarding that. And again, that would only be if the bank parking spaces were constructed. The algebraic setback, as I mentioned, we went over this the last meeting. There's a slight encroachment, so to speak, of the algebraic analysis from the north. The building meets the minimum setback of the ordinance, which is applied by way of the center line of the street. So, the middle of Long Lake Road is where the setback is determined. But when you apply the algebraic setback analysis, you always take that from the property line. So, it kind of acts against the development, whereas you have to make the algebraic setback from the closer of the two. So, it's a unique situation in how to apply the minimum setback. And fortunately, there's only one test line of the algebraic setback that does not meet the analysis. And this is just a zoomed in version showing the existing building. As you can see here, the red dash line is the 35-foot setback and the existing building's slight encroachment into that. So, underneath the second story of the building, this area is parking. And so, they just proposed to fill that in to be used as the medical clinic that's proposed for the change of use of that building. You can kind of see how that's weighed out here. So, this is pulling in off of Concord, the existing building with the slight encroachment into the setback. And by enclosing this in, it's going to require variance. So, and again, this would be just to further explain the front yard loading requiring a variance. And then a color rendering from the applicant showing what's proposed. So, the materials will be the same to match the existing. This is the area. As you can see, those three parking spaces will be enclosed. Again, this is a clinic building. And so, that's the reason why you don't see windows in this particular portion of the building. The applicant can explain further those details. But this is just to show that what the intent is for the new construction of this area is to match what exists today. The planning commission also asked for scaled elevations. This is the main view looking west, around the west side of the building, looking towards the building. So, this is the area where the parking is underneath, the area where the parking is underneath. So, it's two dimensional. So, it's hard to see and, you know, visualize the depth of this area. But that's, that's a different thing. So, up here on the top, this would be the proposed screening, the white horizontal metal roof mechanical screen or the new rooftop equipment. And so, that will be a five-foot height for that screening. So, again, that's that view from Concord Road, looking at that new addition and enclosure of the parking spaces there. And then just the others, so north, this would be south, east, so east and north elevations. So, that in a nutshell is the different items that planning commission to ask for, requested of the applicant. Again, the applicant's here and can have that conversation. Happy to answer questions. Otherwise, we can go into the city engineer's presentation.
You know, Eric, maybe we'll just wait till Jamie does his thing and then we'll ask questions for both of you guys. Do you get a break?
Good evening. I'm Jamie Burton with HRC. Actually, Eric covered quite a bit.
We had a very productive meeting with the applicant in this room. Like he's mentioned, end of August, beginning of September. We went through a lot of items. Eric touched on most of them, I'm gonna highlight a couple more, just to highlight those. So no impact utilities, drainage is being handled. And then I want to focus a little bit on these things. Because one of the other words that the planning commission used was checking the functionality for the functioning of this building, and how it might work, kind of circulation, the flows. So as you work our way through here, I mean, there really are two separate sites, one common ownership, different uses, et cetera. The ADA, we went through that within analysis, and you see we've added spaces. On the north building, we've also moved them away to make them maneuverable, because parking up against a wall is difficult, right? So if you notice, there's some changes in how we move, they moved one of the spaces over to the other side. We spent a significant amount of time, there is no national standard for parking decks. There are guidance, like Ashville guidance, there's Michigan National Parking Association, Fire, ADA, et cetera. But we went to, HRC does, this site's civil work for probably the biggest parking deck manufacturer in the United States, here at the airport and everything. We went back to them, and we asked for those standards, and this is what we used. We checked that against all the dimensions, and all the doors, the widths, et cetera, and they're meeting all those requirements. But functionality-wise, we really, they came up with this idea of the motion sensors, the door, the clearances, have all been added to the drawings, so you can see kind of how that works. I quit it, so if you've ever been to the parking deck in Birmingham, kind of on the southeast corner of Woodward and Maple, behind the buildings, it's like a triangle shape.
Where, where?
In Birmingham, south of Maple, east of Old Woodward, behind those buildings.
East of Woodward?
Yeah. The parking deck's like...
Like the movie theater?
Behind the old Peabodys.
Behind the old Peabodys and...
Between the wood...
No, behind the attorney firm.
Old Woodward. Between the wood, okay. You said Woodward.
Yeah, it's, if you notice that, that parking...
Not a parking lot I could use.
That parking deck is like octagonal, it's kind of shoehorned in there. So we had a lot of discussions about our uses of parking decks in the area. And is this going to be more difficult, and the answer is no, I think it's gonna be pretty common. Fire chief has said no electrical vehicles in the basement. We put a, because of the clearance underneath the building, the north building, thinking about how Amazon or UPS or other small vehicles, I mean, they're not gonna go under there, they're not gonna park next to it, so we wanted to make sure we had a designated area for them, which is no different than any other driveway, if you will. But they still have the larger one at the south, high clearances. And then we really had a second conversation about zoning ordinance and planning commission. Typically, we don't require full construction drawings, right? We don't require them to have everything figured out, right? This is the planning commission, and then we move to construction, building permit, etc. But we wanted to make sure that the applicant was aware of and saw no issues with meeting all those requirements, specifically the structural loading on the roof. I'm an A engineer, so does a lot of that work.
Okay.
Mechanical, electrical, and structural work. So we went through, and they, on the front page of the plans, they listed all the applicable codes and standards. And while not necessarily addressing them for us to be able to check them today, they're aware of that, and that'd be all part of the building permits sets and the building codes.
And that's for weight of just the mechanical units?
No, that's for, if you, I mean, as you pull into this parking lot, you are driving over a deck
Oh, yes, yes.
in the parking area in the building. So I have confidence that they will get there, but one of the things the planning commission members talked about was, was talking about making sure, you know, weight loadings and making sure it worked and the function, again, going back to that functionality. And so they were able to put a lot of that on their, on the drawings, so that it's part of your motion and approval, so that if there's a major problem or error, we can always come back. And we made, in our letter, we made some recommendations as it relates to additional work that needs to be done, which is typical at this point. I mean, from an engineering perspective, we are good. They meet applicable standards, but we want to make sure you, what you guys were concerned about has been represented to applicant, it shows up on the drawings, so if and when they're approved, site plan drawings, that there's no miscommunication as to what standards and applicable items we want to see for the construction plan approval. So we got a couple of our slides, but they're kind of super relevant.
Have you run into anything in the, in the city of Blue Bill Hills before, where someone wanted to have people on the roof, rooftop, engineer doing one?
No, not that I recall. We've, let me back up, let me think. I would have to think very hard about that. We have looked at, you know, you still need access to a roof, right, for mechanicals, units and whatever, and those...
One person.
Or mechanical units need to be reset or whatever, groups of people. I just redid our building in Troy, know a lot about those roofs. So there's always access to roofs, but that would be handled through the building. Now, putting people up there is a structure, is a different structural component, which they've identified live loads and dead loads and stuff, and that would be reviewed by your building official during that set. As far as it being a patio, I can't recall one off the top of my head that we've looked at. It's a patio on a roof. People have talked about it before, but I don't think we've ever had that scenario. But from a structural standpoint, we've seen in other communities, we've seen in other communities, we've done, we've done green roof reviews. Applicants here have, for housing, have asked for green roofs to get away from the open space requirement. If you remember, there's been a few of those, pools, underground, and et cetera. So we have looked at that, and it's pretty common at this point, which is not in Blue Bill Hills for structural review or approval.
Thank you.
You should ask our resident expert, Connie, who's been on the commission for 20 years.
Close to 20, I'm not sure. How long have I been on the city commission, or on the planning commission?
Not long enough.
Exactly, good answer. We came in at the same time, you told me. When did you start here?
I've been here 24 years.
Oh, 24 years.
See, there you go.
Thank you for your service.
And we don't have a lot of commercial office space or the hotel space where they would want a rooftop. I mean, but it's very common, I mean, think about Royal Oak and, I mean, they're everywhere right now, right? Rooptops and...
I see them on the streets, I don't see them on top of the building.
Well, yeah, streets, during COVID, the streets became very popular.
Yeah.
Can I answer any questions, or I'll stay up while you fire questions, Eric and I?
I have a question for you on that signage one. When your quote about signage for the electric vehicles?
So you really haven't provided a, like, necessary sign as part of, to get a building permit, the fire marshal's gonna say, no, no electrical vehicles in the basement. If you want to require that, I don't have a problem with requiring that, putting a sign up. I think because the underground is, I would assume is gonna be relative, it's all staff-related, like, a visitor wouldn't necessarily go down there, because if you visit a parking lot in the building, and it's nowhere near a front door, I think you would tend to stay above. But we had no problem putting a sign there. I imagine that would be more for them to regulate their own people in the basement. A sign would be no problem to add.
I think we should, because we have to remember, you know, we're long gone on this commission. We're supposed to be approving things for new owners, new residents. The building's gonna be here, and we have to remember that that was a requirement. And I think that's a very safe requirement, given electric vehicle fires that we experience in garages.
Yeah, so I think a good spot for it would be near that door. So as you're pulling in, before you turn, where the staircase is and the door, where you put us, that's a solid wall, they can put a sign right there that says, no electric vehicles.
Would it be obscured from the street and from, I mean, can you, you know where the green red light is? Would you put it next to that?
No, because by then, you're already halfway down the garage. You've turned, so I think this needs to be before you turn. No, it wouldn't be from high oak, because it's all screened and all the plants and the use and stuff. But as you come there, and you're thinking about turning right to go into the parking deck with roller gates and everything, the sign could go right on there, no electrical vehicles. Once you get down to the bottom, you're gonna have to back out. Or you're gonna go into the deck.
It's hard to tell. It looks like you're going down the ramp, and that light is up here before you go down, you see it.
You can see it as you turn, you can see it immediately, yeah, you can see it there, you see it, there's another one at the bottom inside the deck, so if you're coming around...
But don't you see it immediately, so you know not to go down?
Yes, it's like right fr, I mean, it's on the, kind of the top of the ramp.
That's what I thought. So isn't that the same immediate notice you need to make for the electric vehicles as you do to say you can go, you cannot go?
But by then, you already have an electrical vehicle on the ramp. Someone may want to try to back up or do something weird or go in and out. So I think it would be better, or...
So what happens if someone goes down and it's a red light?
They stop and wait for somebody else to exit.
You'd have to have a stop here on red.
Oh, they just can't make the turn, they can stay there, aren't they?
Yeah, they can, they can stay on their side, it's a 20-foot road, I mean, that's, that's where we build our roads to.
Tight, but, yeah.
Tight, but I mean, parking spots are nine, and you know, so I think it, it works. And again, I don't imagine, because that's not where the reception is, I gotta imagine that it's going to be staff, and they'll figure it out pretty quick. I'd want one of those parking spots, whatever, that's just me, in the winter, especially.
Any other questions for Jamie? I have a couple.
Yes.
So I'm just trying to understand this underground parking a little, just a little bit better. So where is this light at?
We use an air extraction, just to see if it's always better. Tom, give me one that... Eric, is it, did I go too fast?
Turning readings, those images might be the best.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, so, no, it's the next one. So right at the top, oh, it just doesn't work, oh, maybe, right at the top, right here, see? Right in there, there's two red lights. And then there's, hang on, another one here, and then there's, these are down at the bottom, the red-green, okay? So that if someone's trying to turn this corner, they see it's red, they know someone's coming down. If these are lit up, someone's on its, and they're all motion sensor activated. I'd say it's a, it's a unique opportunity, but it's not, I mean, a lot of places have those kind of, there's one ways, or like a warehousing, or trucks, you know, back and forth. So I think you got multiple chances to not collide at the bottom without having to honk or horn. But if he starts here, another one in the middle, and then I would assume this might be like two-way from both sides, and then two at the bottom. So I think it's pretty well-covered.
So what's going on with the door, then?
I have to, I have the applicant, because I was never, I was never really sure exactly where that was. I think it's behind the lights, right, or is it at the bottom?
It's right there, Tom.
Right here.
The door is at the bottom?
And it would be activated with the same time that the lights are. So they, at the top of the ramp, it's a, it's a motion sensor, so light would go red downstairs, the door would open, someone would come down. Or if someone had already started to go past the motion sensor in the lower level, the red light would be up above, and the door would open for them to come up.
So it...
It's fairly standard, honestly, fairly standard for underground parking systems to have lighting system.
We raised questions during our meeting about the aesthetics of what's going on here. So in terms of the finishes on the walls, as you're going down, what you'd see, and what the door looks like, I've looked at a couple of examples in our city. The, the buildings that are on the southwest corner of Long Lake and Woodward. And when you look at the entrances to those, those underground parking decks, they're finished with a brick veneer, they've got a track, they've got, they've got attractive doors. I mean, they're just finished-off areas. And I asked, I asked this question in my memo, did you guys address that question?
It was more of an overall hearing.
No, actually, no, it was a pretty straightforward question.
I mean, that'd be addressed.
Oh, so I guess I'm interested, because actually, there's, there's a couple of different situations. And if you look at that building, I don't know who built that building, but, I mean, it's attractive. And so I'm just wondering, are we gonna replicate that so that it looks attractive versus just raw concrete walls? So that was a question. Is there gonna, and then, is there gonna be a bar attached? So some of our parking decks, we've got these, they're like bars across, and then they list height, just...
It's like a test, test bar.
Are we gonna have those on this, on this lot? Do we know? Okay, okay.
I'm not gonna address those when I'm up.
Okay, that's fine. And so those are my, my questions on the deck. There is a requirement, I just want to make sure, I heard what you said, Jamie, and I'm happy with it, but it's not in your memo. And so I just, I guess I want to reconcile it so that your memo agrees with the ordinance required. So the ordinance says... So it says, "The internal arrangement and design shall be reviewed by the city engineer for appropriate grades, traffic circulation, aisle length, column spacing, ceiling height, exit stairwell, and elevator location." This is for parking areas. So, and I see in your memo, what you, what you addressed was, and I get it, I heard what you said, that some of this you may do before the permit is pulled with respect to the adequacy of the loads and that kind of thing. So you say, part of the construction permits, applicant is, provides structural load calculations, and I get all that, that makes sense. Although it's already in here, you just haven't looked at it and finalized it, but...
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna approve the structural...
I get it, yeah, I, I'm happy with it. But I guess with respect to this, this ordinance that I just read to you?
Yep.
So if that was in this letter?
We can, yeah, so let me reconcile that, we did all that, but it didn't make in the letter. We kind of focused on what's next, but we went through the MPA standards, we went through the heights, the widths, the drives, and all of that, with, actually with the applicant to start, and then we checked it afterwards.
So, so then for, I'll cut to the chase. So for the record, can we include in our minutes that this, this provision of the ordinance, while it's not, while it's not in your letter, this was reviewed?
Yes, you may. Okay, I'll copy that.
I'm happy with that. Okay? So I guess, no one else has questions for you?
No, I'm not leaving.
So, Eric? Well, are there questions for Eric?
Yeah, I had a quick question. You mentioned that the landscaping is required for the bank parking, but I don't see what the species are gonna be, or is that something you put in after you have, you decide you need to utilize the bank parking? And who, who authorizes or who dictates whether the bank parking is used or not?
So, the, so for this area of the proposed plan, the green shaded area, again, my intent was to kind of explain what the requirement would be, what the ordinance says that the planning commission has oversight for, and that's when proposed parking abuts another parking lot on an adjacent site. And so shown here in the red dash area is the parking of that adjacent piece. So we kept this in as a standard of the ordinance that technically would require planning commission approval, even though the way that this is laid out, you know, it, it could be argued that maybe it doesn't apply. So what, the way that we reviewed this going forward was that on the landscape plan, there is landscaping in this area shown with the intention to screen. I don't know if I have that plan that shows like the species and the caliper and whatnot. But there is a screening or a buffering of that area.
So they are planting something there?
There will be planting regardless of whether or not the banked parking spaces are built.
But whatever those species are, whatever it is, it's not in the plan right now?
It would be on the landscape plan, I just don't think I have that included in the presentation. But so there is...
I was curious why that was not included as well.
Sorry?
I was curious why that was not included as well, the landscape plan.
It's, I don't think I have it on the presentation, but it should be in the packet, because it was...
I just didn't see it.
Looked on here, but...
The landscape plans.
There's a couple of trees noted, but it doesn't show the trees, the old trees that were pulled, it doesn't show the replacement plan, the key, all that.
That was looked at...
Might have been in a previous application?
Well, we looked at it previously, but since that wasn't one of the main focuses of the previous meeting, I don't have it in the presentation. But we would be sure to look at the... But we would be sure to look at the standards of the ordinance and what the proposal is for the landscaping of that area, with adequate screening of those parking spaces.
I guess to follow up on what, before you change subject, because I got the same question. So when, when we, and this came up during our meeting, and I'm looking at the landscape plan. So there's the trees that are like in the corner and that sort of thing. So, are we removing all these trees?
For the applicant.
I think we talked about that, they were last time.
So, well, I guess I thought the jury was out as to whether or not we're gonna remove all those. So, we didn't really look at that.
We did an analysis for the tree removals and the plantings and the replacement and all of that. I didn't deal with this most current review, because nothing had changed.
Okay. Just trying to understand the facts. You can make a decision. So I'm looking at the landscape plan, and there's these trees, and I think we had pictures of them, and they're right on the corner. So, I guess we'll ask the applicant.
And I had another question, could you go to the slide where you show a whole line of windows and then it becomes, where they're enclosed? There's so many products out there that, faux windows, I, I don't know why you wouldn't make it look better aesthetically by that brick insert being a faux window to match all the other windows? Like if you have a closet in a house and you don't want light in that closet, but the outside facade is such, outside facade, you could put a fake window in.
They, I mean, they can't be real.
Exactly, they don't need to be, but I just thought it makes sense, sort of continuity of a big building, that maybe you continue and make it look like there are windows to go all around.
That's a great suggestion.
Yeah, it is a good suggestion.
Well...
It just has like a data center look to it.
In fact, an argument could be made that as it stands now, excuse me, I don't wanna use the phrase ugly as sin, but it looks, it looks like a combination of a warehouse and a very pleasant office building. So why couldn't the applicant consider doing something about exactly what Commissioner Fisher has mentioned? There has to be some alternative to this disaster that we're looking at. With all due respect.
And frankly, you could actually put, I don't know, I thought that was an operating room or something. Actually, in my office building, we have, we have windows, but there's a wall behind it, so that they match the rest of the building.
I can put this to bed very quickly, that's easily done, this was just...
Yeah, so you can actually...
This was not gonna be...
Yeah, you can actually put...
Say it's that kind of a system, and, and it getting less expensive, less, you know, involved in terms of moisture and other things, you know, behind stuff, just because it's closed inside and you have a window outside. There's certainly ways to do that, so if that's, that's the commission's, you know, response, we can certainly make that happen.
That'd be great.
So, I, I guess, to carry that forward, so that there's some resolution. I heard what you're asking for, and I heard what the applicant has said, I'm just trying to reconcile.
They agreed to put faux windows to mimic all the other windows.
Just to see if we would think it's a window outside. We'll make that, there's more than, there's some, there's more than one. You can do it by putting a window in and blocking it off and then building, building behind it, filling it in.
Well, we'll just put a...
They're reflective, they look exactly the same as the others from the outside.
We'll, we'll make that happen.
Great products out there, thank you very much.
Other comments for Eric? So, I have a question, so, and this is for the commission as a whole, and we can ask the applicant this. The, we've addressed a number of these, and that's a good thing from my own perspective. I'm still uncomfortable with the front elevation along High Oaks for this building. And I say that...
Is this the front elevation, I wish it said front elevation, is this a front elevation?
No, that would be the side yard. So the front elevation is...
The front yard is sloping High Oaks, rather.
So, it's that.
Yes, thank you.
So I say this, and we have specific provision in our ordinance about the front elevation of a building. And we all had a chance to look at our design standards, and we've got some really specific rules regarding front elevations on buildings. And the city is open to differences in architectural style. Got our new buildings, the JFK building is substantially different. It's that new building that's north of Long Lake on the west side of Woodward. He designed that, he said, after the Ross Business School, you know, it, it was a more modern type of architecture, it's, it's attractive. If you look on the south side, where the, I'm gonna call it the Jonah Building and the Dykema Building, those are more traditional, and they all look good. So, we're open to change, personally, I mean, there's, there's nine people here. But, as I'm looking at this, if this building were proposed, we've got vacant spaces in the city right now, that could be raised and new buildings placed. Where the Detroit First Building is, the, the Little Daddies, that building is now vacant and can be changed. And so, if this building was proposed along Woodward, frankly, I, I guess I'd have, I'd have real, I'd have difficulty accepting it. From the standpoint of, there's really no face, and this isn't the first time I've raised this issue. There's no face to the, to the first floor of the building. And when I look at other areas in the city where we've got them, and I raised this picture before, only I don't think I had it. This is the building that's along Bloomfield Parkway, and there's parking underneath here, but you don't see any of it. And these hedges, they actually are much taller, I think, they're probably about seven or eight feet tall. And there's actually a wall down here, it's a masonry wall, and these are, are actually, they're columns. But the columns, they're all, they're all finished off in a brick veneer, which isn't uncommon. When you go into, if you can picture driving into Birmingham, on the west side of Woodward, just south of Park Street.
The, the drive through to Southfield Road.
I mean...
The drive, it's, it's the quick way around to Southfield Road?
Yeah, yeah, there's actually three buildings there that have columns. And, and they're, they're architecturally attractive, they're big, they're finished with brick veneer. So, I'm seeing a couple different things here. And normally, our commission isn't looking at these design standards, because we never, we rarely use the design standards, and we circulated them today, because they don't apply to anything except commercial buildings. But, but they give us, they specifically require finishes on buildings should be brick and stone, except for just accents. And here we've got all these white steel columns.
Thank you all for being here, actually, it's, I know it's a weird day. Regarding the elevations, this actually, this site has many front yards, this is not the only front yard that's here, as we looked before. And Eric, you said you did not, you did not have the submission that they have on their packet on here?
This way here?
That...
These ones?
That's the electronic submission of that, that's fine, they have everything there, so, there are several...
You're talking these?
Yeah, he has electronic, I thought he had that with him when that was going to happen. So, all of the elevations that you see there, from Long Lake Road, it's a story and a half brick facade. From this side, it is two materials, there's really only three materials on the building, besides the, there's glass, the brick, and the zinc metal. You know, your, your ordinance talks about a lot of, a lot of different things relative to the...
Is the zinc metal white, sir? Is this what, you're talking the zinc metal is what we're looking at that's white, is that zinc?
The zinc, the zinc metal is... So, this gray material is the, is the zinc metal, that is on two sides of the building here. It's a natural material.
Is it reflective?
It's not reflective, it's very, very matte finish. It's, it's a natural material, it's already naturally patinaed. It is on both sides of the building here. Then, everything else on the building is brick besides clear glass. The, the vertical fins have a, because this is a net zero LEED certified building, the, the fins are assisting with sun control. When the sun comes from the south, there are workstations that are right along those areas, so it, it helps to make that sun, you know, on an angle, so that, so there's a purpose behind those. It's not just there, we've used, you know, that type of material for, for other reasons, for screening and things like that.
That's the fourth material, so it's not...
But that's not what it's here.
Yeah, so it's the fourth material, you have brick, zinc, glass, and, and white.
Yes, the same, it's the same material as the glass sash or the glass frames, so it's a clear aluminum material. So it matches the, all of, all of the materials that are around the glass, it's the same, same material.
Okay, so that's not really coming through in the drawing. So, you, for purposes, that, what I'm looking at right there, just so far, over the woman in yellow, that is a matte finish zinc.
Correct.
Okay, and then the, the white that goes around the windows, and also serves as the shading for the windows, is a matte finished white aluminum?
It's a clear aluminum.
Clear aluminum, okay.
Eric, can you just set that?
Just 'cause it's not coming out in the...
Set that board up on, on the chair there. So, so this is the, this is the window sash material, this is the same finish material that would be as that vertical slab, which is bigger, bigger than that. Then, the zinc material is here, the brick obviously here. The, the white that's there is the metal panel that's on the south building for the new screen of the new rooftop units that are gonna be on the south building. So we just added that to this board.
So these, yes...
Where's that, I'm sorry, can you, can you show us on the, where the, the white is on the south old building, what you're adding?
Yeah, right there, so you see at the top, there's not a, there currently is not a roof screen on this building. So the rooftop units that are gonna be up there are gonna be removed, new rooftop units are gonna be provided for the new user, and then this will be screening for those. It previously had a white, previously had a white screen on it that was approved originally, and so we are applying the same, same color screen as was originally on the building.
Who's approved one?
Pardon?
Who's approved one, is it, is it there right now?
It's not there now, it was there on older pictures, it's not there now.
Okay, so did we approve of it, did we approve of a white, a white thing?
Well, everything on this building is, is white except for the brick, all of the...
The detail.
So, I mean, you have brick and then all of, all of the, the trim and all of the limestone and everything, besides this, this is a steel channel, eyebrow and intercanopy that...
And that's in like a bronze material, correct?
It's just a paint, it's a painted steel material.
Why wouldn't you use that on the top so that you don't see it as well? Why would you choose white?
I could use whatever this board would want. We used white because that's what was previously on there, and because white was what, what the trim was there.
Yeah, 'cause that's a really good looking building.
I mean, it could be, we were just matching what was originally on the building.
What year is that building built? Do you know what year that was built?
What year, nineteen eighty?
Eighty, that's why I thought so, looks like an eighty design. I mean, thank you for being continuous about doing the screening, but I do agree, a darker structure would make it look, go away. You know what I mean? We, we just care, what you want is...
Can you match that, that other detail? The darker, that's good looking. I, I don't wanna dictate, but...
Well, no, actually, so, just so everyone understands, because this question was posed to me a couple times. Our design standards give the planning commission the, the privilege of, of dictating what we expect, provided it's intended to provide something that's consistent with the community, the surrounding area and that sort of thing. So, you certainly have that privilege to have that.
Sir, do you, do you understand what the chairman said? It's not like we're power hungry, we wanna tell you how to be an architect, but it's not you, it's all the buildings that are coming in after you. So, you, as talented as you are, could set a standard that will, that we can, that we can maintain, because we're going to have a list of commercial buildings coming up. And, and, and that's why we're pressing you so hard. You're very likable, and you're very compliant with opening to what we're saying, sure, I'll change the color, but you, but we're asking you to, to understand that we have buildings coming after you. So, this feels more important to us than, than, than a house down in a cul-de-sac that no one's really gonna see. It's gonna, it's gonna make a big effect from this building, next building, to the next building on the city, and it's a, it's a big responsibility for us. So when we're asking you for things, we're not trying to give you a bad time.
Sure. So, just, just...
There just aren't any photographs of the old building?
Well, actually, I had...
From the old packet there.
I had actually pictures, I looked on, on Google, and there is no picture that I see of screening on this building.
I'm, I'm telling you, it is...
And maybe there is, and maybe there is, but there was...
I'm sure you're right, yeah.
There, there was at some point, I don't know when it was taken off. It was, it was a white screen that had, that had horizontal sliding on it.
But I guess, at the end of the day, bottom line is, you're removing all that, that hardware anyways, all, all that HVAC equipment is going.
Correct.
So, it's all going, so at the end of the day, we're gonna have, it's probably preferable, because what's sitting there seems to be really tall and, and not very attractive. So this is gonna be smaller, so that's a good thing.
Yes.
Second thing is, I think the suggestion to make it a more palatable color, the...
Recommend it would go away and still be congruous with that older building.
Probably if you do a dark on that, it's, you're gonna see it more, in my opinion, against the sky, because, because the, the top of the building has, has white trim around it, or whitish trim, whatever that final color is. You know, typically, we would do some type of a light gray perhaps. I don't typically get into dark screens, just because they become very, very visible if there's nothing else on the roof. But...
Something that maybe matches...
I didn't even know if it would have to be white, because it was previously white, that was more of our assumption, that since this was an existing building, it was a replacement of an existing screen that had been removed at some point. It was my assumption that it would need to be the same color as, as what was in the photographs that we found.
No. Well, I think it's lower than the new building would be, and the clients, people inside on the rooftop are gonna be looking at it too, so I think it, it doesn't...
They really won't see it, but, because they'll be on the other side of, they'll be on the north, north side of that stair, but still, again...
I, I have, I have questions, I have questions. Um, last time, when we had these, these renderings, we didn't have all the columns in here. And this time, when I'm looking at the renderings, and it may just be what you're putting into, into your AI here, but I don't see the, the garden rooftop. I don't see the fake vine wall, I don't see people standing up on this rooftop in any of these renderings.
If you look, I think it's maybe on the side of the sheet.
I have one, but I'm not looking at, I'm looking at... I have one, but I'm not looking at, I'm looking at what I'm seeing. So, you're saying from the roof, we're not gonna see the people?
There is an image in, in the packet.
Okay, 303.
Keep going, 303, ask one perhaps.
Yeah, I just trying to see if it's drawn on any of the other...
It's not on any of the other things.
In terms of where it sits, I would sit on the roof.
You just don't show it on any of these.
It's not hidden.
Any of them.
And it is, it is...
Totally would see it from these vantage points, it didn't incorporate it in these, any of these.
Are we talking about the existing building?
No, we're talking about the new building.
The new building. The rooftop deck that you're having the people on.
Point two four, I guess it's A301.
I think what we'd like to see there is, what's that gonna look like from the street? Everybody driving by.
So, if you look at the front elevation, and you look at the other elevation, at the other views that are for the front of the building there, the reason you're not seeing it is because you do not see it. You do not see, you do not even see the shrubbery, you know, the, the green space that's up there.
It's not shrubbery, is it, is it plastic wall of flowers?
You're saying from Long Lake, you didn't see any of the shrubbery?
On the roof, that is...
Any of the rooftop items?
Do you see plastic vines?
And just as an FYI, when you look at our design standards, it's, that type of thing, just so you understand, is specifically addressed in here. So, it says, it would be under the miscellaneous structures and accessories. Miscellaneous structures include any structures of the building, municipal, community public. Site accessories include all objects not commonly referred to as structures located outside of the building. Then, there's miscellaneous structures, there are site accessories. So, at the end of the day, it's, it's a fair ask to understand what that's gonna look like. And I think when we...
Pretty close to the edge here. I can't, there's, there's no way you can't see that hedge, it's a five-foot hedge, and it's pretty close to the High Oak edge.
See, I'm 303, is that, that's your...
Yes.
But this, but this isn't Royal Oak, and this isn't a high-end apartment complex with a bunch of young people to hang out. And if we approve of any kind of rooftop with plastic vine walls on this building, then how do we turn down the next building when they build on Big Daddy's site? And what is that gonna look like? A rooftop area to hang out on top of a bar? I mean, are we gonna be able to say no to that? How would we say no to that if we don't say no to this?
What, what was the plastic, I didn't remember.
Well, I can see that maybe from Long Lake, you can't see it, you can definitely see it.
If, if you look at the perspective in the upper left-hand corner of that same sheet, that is perspective. You see the very tip-top of the stair, and, and you actually see maybe a foot of, of the green, the five-story hedge up there. It's sort of in the corner between the glass and the brick. That's literally the view from the street, we took that on purpose.
Okay, I can see from this drawing and the distance that maybe you don't see it from Long Lake, but I can't imagine you don't see it from High Oak. It's so close to the edge, and it's a five-foot high. It just, it just seems like it should have been represented on this drawing on 301.
From High Oak, if you look at the, if you look at the side view on the first page.
Page number 301?
First, 301, upper right corner.
There's no rooftop.
Right there, you're not seeing the hedge because it's, it's, it's not tall enough.
Is this a, is this a real hedge that you have up there? Is this a real hedge with dirt and watering?
Yes, these are planter boxes with real hedges in it.
Real hedges.
And the roof is a live green roof.
And you never thought of enclosing that, glass-wise?
Say that again?
Would you never thought of enclosing that as a, as an all-around year or...
Oh, I'd love to, we started there.
But it's too, it's too tall.
No, we've, we've crossed that bridge.
Yeah, we, we've crossed it. You're not putting any lighting up there, correct?
There would just be, you know, something like right at, you know, like twelve inches off, a couple of lights just so that you can walk up there.
On the ground, but I mean, I'm not gonna see the string lighting.
This would just be very low level, like the plug in the wall there, just to have a downlight so that if you're walking, you can see it.
You know, I, I think Catherine raises an important issue. And in part, it may be separate from this building, but if we, if we approve of rooftop, of using the rooftops on buildings, we've, do we have any conditions, Dave, that you can think of where we've got people occupying roof space?
No, Eric and I talked about this in a subway.
And so, I guess, I look at things a little differently sometimes. I look not only at the condition that's in front of us, but I'm looking at precedent. And what are we doing here? Now, I recall, remember we had the shingle over the rooftop screen in there? We actually used vegetation. I think we got, there's planting material up there, isn't there?
There's, there's more of an aluminum vented product.
But if, if we now begin allowing use of a rooftop for a patio, and I did ask the question, and I don't know if it was addressed, there's a limitation on the use of the upstairs, of the roof for mechanical purposes. It's a percentage, do you know what it is? You're the expert. I think I got it in my notes somewhere. Did we, did we, did we, did we evaluate that? No, no, there's a...
It's much bigger than what we have, but there is a number there.
Is it, okay, I, I don't know what...
I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, it's a pretty big number.
So, so there's two issues. We've got this situation, but then, are we then opening the door to allowing people throughout the city with buildings to begin creating rooftop uses on those buildings? And is that acceptable? And I'm just asking the planning commission that question.
Wouldn't it be included in the limit of height? Because it's like living space, so it's like a room even though there's no ceiling or anything.
Well, you would think, sort of, but our height determination is based on the building. It's actually based on the rough line of the building. So...
Just, just a real quick question about that. So, if you see this little piece of white right there, that's actually the top of an eight-foot door that goes into the stair, so that's why you can't see the shrubbery, that's why you can't see any people up there because this is the same model that showed those people in the other view on sheet 303. But you don't, you don't see them because this, this building has a parapet, you know, like a three-foot parapet on it, so the roof level is a little bit down farther. And by the time you get even closer, you, the closer you get, the more that, that stair just disappears as you get closer. And when you're on Long Lake Road, if you look at that 303 sheet, you're not seeing, I mean, you can, you get a peek in that one shot of the corner of the upper stair, but that's way higher than any people would...
It's far enough, yeah.
I, I think that...
So, you're not gonna see anyone.
I, 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 I see what you're saying, but there's a case in point of something the city manager shut down immediately. And there is a copycat thing that happens. Everyone's been turned down, never thought about being on the rooftop, never thought about building buildings with rooftops. And on our particular street, everyone was starting to put their rocks to the edge. City manager goes in and makes everyone move their rocks back. Next person who brings out twenty-five boulders looks over at the guy who has, has had to move their rocks back, and they say, "Yeah, I see your point," and they move all their rocks back. There has to be a line that, that the city can enforce, and, and we have laws about not owning the first three feet, and we have design standards about not having people hang out on rooftops of commercial buildings. And I don't think we should cross that line.
And just, my point is that your twenty-five-foot setback of your rocks is basically the screen that we have here. So, I mean, you're not seeing any of that. Is there anything in the ordinance that's a hall of rooftop use?
That, not that I could find.
It's under design, our design choice, we have the power to not allow it to be designed in the city.
Which you, you might think that there, there are...
I'd just like to ask you, sir.
Yes, sir.
What's the business purpose of the, the green space? I mean, we all love green spaces, but is it a, is it a, like a place you go to have a cigar?
The, the business purposes of it is you have, you know, engineers that come into this office at six o'clock, seven in the morning, and they sit in a chair for eight hours a day. This gives them a place to, they can go, they can get some outside, we've got a green roof on here, they can go up, they can... Nobody else sees that green roof except the guys that will go up there.
So, are these people...
So, this is just a wealth and health, you know, get up, get outside.
So, they're not exactly expecting to have a rave party?
No, no, not at all. This is a very small area, it's, it's purely for, you know, employees that might go up there during the day. This, this isn't open at night, these people don't work, I mean, this isn't a restaurant.
Was it, was it higher than negotiation on rent?
It's not a rent, this is a builder, owner of an occupied building.
What if it was looked at like a screening, if you can't see it at all, and it's, it's established you can't see it, that could possibly be considered based upon where the building's at? But I don't know if you, I don't know if you, if you can guarantee that.
Another, I, I guess, when you just said, no one's gonna see it, or people are gonna be up, and they could be there in the morning. This goes back a lot of years. I was in, I was in a different city, and I looked out the window, it was a city with big buildings, and people had their rooftop, you could see on the rooftops. So, across the street, this is residential use, right across the street on the other side of High Oaks. So, you have residential uses here, and I just heard you say, "Well, people may be out there first thing in the morning, maybe they'll want their coffee." So, at the end of the day, it's residential across the street, someone can, that's, that's designed for residential uses. If I was living across the street, the last thing I wanna look at in the morning is a bunch of engineers having their coffee.
What's the height of...
But we're not, I, I, I think the space is nice for the workers, and I would not be opposed if you can't see it from Long Lake and you can't see it from High Oak.
So, what about the use across the street, do you care?
What do you mean, the use?
Well, across the street, it's all vacant property?
Across Long Lake or across...
No, across from High Oak.
Oh, that, that's an office building, it was a house.
It's all, it's vacant and it's almost residential.
But none of them can see that, they can't see the activity or...
We solve this by going, making the hedge six feet tall, six...
What about a noise level?
'Cause it's not built.
We can, you're still not gonna see it, that's what I'm saying.
Well, if you can't see it from High Oak...
We had a lot of conversations going on for minute keeping, I think we should try to...
No, that's fine. So, so, at the end of the day, there's question about this rooftop use. And there's two issues. One is, is it something that we should allow here? Second is, if we allow it here, are we setting a precedent for the future? And how does the commission feel about that?
I feel there probably does. If we do approve it, we do need to write an ordinance to protect how a rooftop, you know, park kind of thing would be allowed. But the way they've drawn this, I'm very comfortable with this rooftop situation. And I don't think the neighbor, the, the housing is even lower on High Oak.
Well, it's not built.
They won't see up that high.
It's not built.
They won't see it from Long Lake.
Yeah, there's no housing there 'cause it's a vacant lot.
Right, but even, oh, you're saying if it was a three-foot, three-story house...
No, if it's a two, if it's a two-story building, but...
Yeah, okay.
So, you recognize.
In, in this, isn't it, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
What if you, in the office building that I'm in in Birmingham, there's a courtyard, if you will, on the, I don't know, third floor, Birmingham Place. And, but it's surrounded, right? So, it's, but you're outside, which is nice, I admit to you, it's a nice feature to have in an office building. I get what everybody's saying about being able to see this, also becomes a geometry issue, right? Further away, the more likely you are to see people that are up there, right? And you're standing right next to the building, you're not gonna see anybody. What if you simply took the hedge from, I'm sorry, five-feet-ish? And you increased the hedge height to six and a half feet? Now, you've given the people the benefit of being able to be outside, they can get fresh air. The chances of anybody seeing anybody over that six or six-and-a-half-foot hedge are, I think, zero? Would that be something that would solve for them?
I like that idea, I like, I, I agree with, I'm struggling with this whole people on the roofs, and I agree with the outdoor space and everything. But I think the hedge is a good idea so that you can't see it. I was gonna say, just build something around that you just can't see it. 'Cause I mean, your example was the hedge is four, go back to the man.
Yeah, I get that you don't want people, like, standing on the top looking out over the hedge, right? I get that. So, and I think that's a good idea. I think you could solve for that by making the hedge taller than people.
Right. So, the guy's kinda short.
There you go, right there.
I mean, he's really short.
So, that's five feet, so we want to make it five feet.
But you're not looking at it in elevation like this.
Well, I know, but my point, I think...
Mayor, I'm, I'm more inclined, I'm more inclined to turn it down. And I see that whenever we do something that's out of the box, that we haven't done in the city, it's because there's no other way of doing it. Case in point, pool at end of road, they had to put it on the side because the whole back lawn was, was a hill.
Okay.
You know, when we do things differently. But there happens to be space that you can see on 303 where they could put a lot more effort into making a really nice space, that is no better than the rooftop, which would be, it, it just makes no sense. Why wouldn't they just put more effort into making this courtyard, maybe a water feature or something like that, and making this a really nice space? There's no need to be, to be starting a precedent of having rooftop hangouts on a, on a roof because you couldn't, because you weren't allowed to build something higher.
And what if they had umbrella tables, and there's this umbrella sticking up?
Right, right, you can all of a sudden go back and say, "I'm sorry, you can't have an umbrella," or "you can't have people go to the edge," you can't... Again, I'm, I'm not inclined, because I've been driving down Big Beaver, and I've been seeing this new thing where people are outside on balconies in business offices. And I go to look, and I think it's distracting, and I'm just not of the opinion that we can guarantee that people aren't gonna be looking over at this building. We don't have a plant, we don't have a planning, we don't have any plant structure, we don't have new trees coming in, we don't have anything, we just have a building that has now a proposed third level. And I'm opposed to voting against it.
So, I, I think where we're left is there's differences of opinion, and it may be that, that the overall plan, and I think we should sort of keep track of these, 'cause it may be that you're expressly against this, but maybe it's, it's a small part of the overall puzzle, and you say, you know, "I don't like this." And I believe we ought to have some kind of rules about this.
Oh, absolutely.
If we allow this, we should set, we should have some rules. And maybe we set those rules a little bit here, and there's ways to accomplish it, and I don't wanna overcomplicate this, because it's an important element that may come back to affect us in the future. I mean, you could give preliminary site approval, subject to them coming back with this particular issue, and the windows, with preliminary site approval, basically, you're good to go, except, which we used to use really often. The last several years, we've gone right to final site plan approval, but we used to go to, we used to have a preliminary site approval, which is everything except the outstanding items. And in recent years, you know, we've overlooked some of those, those nuances by saying, "Okay, we're gonna let you look at it, Dave, but these are some important changes, and so maybe these are part of that." That gives deference to what everyone's saying.
I think they have to come back to the commission, this is not one where we're gonna say, "Dave..."
Okay, well, that's what I, that's...
I, I think they come back, because there's too much...
With preliminary site approval, it at least gives him, it gives the applicant the understanding, "Hey, we're moving in the right direction, and they're not gonna do a 180 on us here, and change course." That the approval is conditioned on these other items and it's actually outlined in the site plan review.
Chairman, can we go onto the other items? Cause this is just one little one.
Okay, okay. So I, I don't, I don't want it to hold up the whole approval. Cause I heard you were an assistant, Katie. You know, I understood that. Cause I've got some other issues.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hold up the approval on the, on the garden thing. Absolutely not. I'm just saying I'm not gonna vote for that part of it.
Okay. Okay.
Um, but I would like to talk about the other things.
Okay, keep going.
Okay, um, I really like the effort, um, that the engineers, um, have put into the whole driving and, and, and the applicant has put into the whole lights and stuff like that. I think it's phenomenal. And again, it shows that you're just a, a really strong applicant for building in our, in our, in our city. Um, I, I really think, um, that, uh, my request is, as I'm driving, and I did this, uh, five or six times, as I'm driving in this beautiful little area that is, uh, Bloomfield Hills Center, right? Bloomfield Hills Center. Um, that I would, I would wish that you would, um, use one of your four materials, um, which is, um, I understand the white on the windows. I mean, I, I, I don't like it in another building, but I understand the white on the windows. But I was, um, wondering if you would consider enclosing these white columns in brick the way the, um, in, in enclosing this, this area, um, the way, um, other buildings have done. And what have you thought about that since we were here last and you were pretty clear that we didn't think that was very Bloomfield Hills built?
Um, it, it's relevant to the design and, and how it is. It's, it's, it's a more modern building. It's not, um, so it wasn't, we were trying to make those, anything else, make them go away and not make them bigger and make them, uh, bulky. Here's the structure of the type of things that we're trying to make. Keep them, keep them light, keep them thin.
How big are these columns right now?
So these are, um, ten inch round columns.
Ten inch round columns. Um, and what is the smallest structure? Now, this is a ten inch round, uh, column that is structurally necessary?
Um, most of them are. There, there are a few, uh, some on the end, uh, in that array of five that are not.
Okay. Um, so, um, you don't need to have five, but you're putting five in for a design.
It's for a visual rhythm. It's not for, uh, to me, the, the, the two would look, um, just wouldn't look appropriate. They would look too, too thin and not right. Just be based on the design.
So a lot of, um, a lot of, uh, homes in the south, um, are all on stilts? And everyone puts a great amount of effort into hiding the lower level of these homes that need to be up high. You need to have a building that's up high so that you can use and get the right amount of parking. But it doesn't seem like you're doing, uh, that, I just really think, um, architects have a lot little more at their, at their, at their fingertips for figuring out a way to, to, um, cover the, a ground level of a necessary ground level for the purposes of this building. And you.
Okay, well, that's, this is, this was particularly done as not enclosing that area to keep the building so that it wasn't huge and heavy, two-story solid building, but much lighter because of the slope of the site and how it sits on there. If this was a, you know, a different flat site, uh, if you look at the, the Long Lakeside, you're literally just a little over a story, maybe not quite a story and a half, um, and it slopes down to the back of the site. The site down below is all on a, on a level, basically a level grade as, as is the building. It's to the west of it, that's on a level grade. So we were working with the, with the slope of the site as well as the parking. And, um, and the slope of the town is on that end, it would become very heavy and, and not an attractive look. So that, that's what we're looking at.
Thank you.
I guess to, to that point, um, these white columns, it looks just, to me, it's, it's gonna look like stanchions. It's just gonna look, stanchions are proposed in your basement. I don't know. It's, um, when I look at what's done in Birmingham and what's done on other buildings, I think finishing these, those, those columns off in some way. I'll, I'll, I'll go back to the original comment I made. If this building was proposed to be built on Woodward, cause this is, this is the front of the building. High Oaks, this is the front of this building. Um, I just don't think it's, it is in a, I do not.
I don't see any building in elevation. You never see just a front elevation.
Pardon me?
You always move around a building. You don't see a building in, in a flat lane. So I, I think, you know, you're, you're also on a forty mile an hour road on Long Lake. Um, I mean.
It's a park, it's a park, it's a parking lot most days on Long Lake waiting for the light. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a beautiful city building that you're parking in front of and then you're parking in front of this. So it's not a flash box.
Wait a second, okay, okay. So my point is.
So if I, could I show a couple of things?
No, I'd like to continue my comment. So, but my point is, um, so here, um, if this building were placed on Woodward, uh, in the place of Little Daddy's or the Dietrich Fur Building, both of those sites may be razed and replaced. I think it'd be totally inappropriate and, uh, because to Catherine's point, there is no structure to this building. And it doesn't, it doesn't look like other buildings that we have in the city. And it's not only that. This is, this is your architecture on the.
You have it upside down.
On the, on the art, on the art van building? I think what you did here, I think that was really, I think that was attractive. This used to all be this underground parking here. You could see those cars. You went ahead and this is your work. Um, and so I guess it's hard to, you know, take shots at your own work.
It's, it's a different.
It's a different building.
It's not, it's not the same that was.
But, so my point is, um, and I'm concerned about what comes after this. And so it's two. I wouldn't wanna set a precedent here, number one, cause we don't have any other buildings like this in the city, number, number one. But number two, if this is approved, um, the only way I could vote for this is if those columns are finished in a fashion that's a more attractive way to finish them. And there's lots of different ways to do that. Um, it can be done with a matching, can you go back to the front elevation of this? Um, you could do it in a matching, uh, brick veneer. Um, um, I mean, those white posts. You know, I guess beauty's in the eye of the beholder. It looks like, it looks like, it looks like a basement. Um, and it's not very attractive. And I think you could finish those in a more attractive way. You could actually, you could take all those posts, um, you could actually put a wall there almost. There's a lot of different ways you could, I'm looking at that. Um, I mean, you got a wall that's ten feet to the north. You could actually create a wall there. You'd actually end up blocking off all the car, all the cars that you're looking at when you're going north on High Oaks. But looking at that, that looks like, it looks like a basement. Um, and I think there's a better way to finish that. And those are, I guess, my comments with respect to that.
What about the east side of the building, this one?
Well, no, that's, I'm saying, it's not as visible there. No, it looks like, it looks like a basement. They look like basement stanchions. So, um.
I agree.
I, I got a couple of other questions. Um, what about signage? We talked about signage. Have you got?
We're not proposing any signage for the building.
So you're never gonna put signage on these buildings?
No signage.
Okay, that's fine. Um, and those are my comments. Does anyone else, else have comments for the applicant?
Well, actually, I'd like to have the city attorney opine as to whether or not the city would potentially incur any obligation or exposure if we permitted the, uh, roof, green roof.
The rooftop area?
Yes, sir. Liability.
I'm, I'm not sure there would be any liability associated with that. This is the architect's drawing. Um, you're reviewing it for, uh, determine whether it meets with the city code requirements. I, I don't, I'm not sure what liability if you look.
You mean if someone falls off?
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure what liability.
Civil liability in the event that someone accidentally fell.
The city wouldn't have any excuse. I don't believe so, no.
Nope. And the planning commission wouldn't have any liability that we approved that type of a structure. That's what I'm.
No, I, I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Well, it's actually, I think, under, under state and federal rules with regard to safety of being on an open air area, is there, I mean, you have to have.
You have double code issue.
Building code issues for, for, for safety that, that apply in the absence of us having an ordinance?
We have, we have, um, that's what all of the screening does for that. It creates a barrier all the way around that opening. There's, there's not an opening onto the, onto the roof.
So there's a rule, um, that says it's gotta be, uh, a certain height, uh, the spacing here. I mean, there's stipulated rules, but those are generally associated with decks where you're overhanging something. Here, this is in the center of a building.
Yeah, you're fifteen feet back.
And you know, just to summarize it, this whole point, I'm not personally against like a rooftop deal, but I don't know what we're opening ourselves up to.
Opening a can of worms.
And, you know, it's just, it's sort of the, uh, creating a condition we don't have in what they're doing. I mean, there's been a lot of suggestions. I, um, so the open suggestions, just to move this thing forward, are, um, fixing the windows on the south building, um, the, the rooftop screening on the south building. Uh, there's question regarding, did we, uh, address the finishes on the, uh, the driveway down to the?
Uh, we didn't currently. We have this as, as concrete walls. There is no visibility for those walls. So I don't understand what the requirement to have them, I mean, there's a curve that's six inches above the grade and it goes down from there. You, you would never, no one would ever see anything that, you can't even see where that, that's going down in there. So I'm.
I can tell you, I, I, and I've got a picture of it. I've got, uh, pictures of two buildings. Uh, one is the building, uh, that's Dykema's building, um, where it's a brick veneer and it looks really attractive. I got, uh.
I understand, but I hate to spend.
And that's fine. I'm just.
Sazin's money on something that will not be seen. Um, I mean.
Actually, I mean, the bottom line is, everyone that drives into this lot is gonna see that. But I guess, now is it important? I, I'm asking the question. So to dismiss it and say, no one's gonna see it, actually, everyone that drives into the lot, they're gonna look down there and they're gonna see it. And if the walls are finished in a brick veneer, it makes, it makes a big difference. But you're right, from the road, you're not gonna see the lot. It's not a deal breaker, but I'm asking the question. I've asked the question three separate times over the last four months and I never got an answer. So now I'm asking the question again. The answer is.
That's the answer. That's the current finish.
That's, that's the current is to have just bare asphalt gray walls.
It's, it's a concrete wall.
I'm sorry, gray, concrete, unfinished walls. Okay?
Okay, yeah, but, yes.
Okay. Um, and then we've got the, the question regarding the, the posts and what we're gonna do with that. Are there any other outstanding questions that we have?
The, the material on screening the equipment on the old building?
I raise that.
Wait, okay.
Yeah. What about the trees? So are we removing all these trees?
So we, we talked about this previously. We went back, um, looked at those again. Those trees were listed originally and, um, by the arborist as poor and fair. They're very large trees. They have a very, very large root base. We were told the root base would be bigger than what's above ground. Um, those trees were determined that they will not survive this construction process. Cause we're gonna be, we're gonna be really getting into, uh, the root systems of those large trees. And they're already fair to poor condition in terms of how the arborists looked at it. So we upsized the, the, um, trees. They were gonna be replacing them, I think, to five inch trees. That, I mean, that was, uh, again, that was the determination. If, if you leave them there, we're gonna end up having a tree that, that dies.
It's gonna die.
Cut it down and then do something else with it. And we just didn't feel that that was, uh, appropriate.
I just gotta make the mention that I, I did look at those trees and I went over, got out and looked at them. They're, they're maples and they're, they're soft maples. So it's interesting that, um, in our ordinance, there's a section that talks about replacement and it doesn't recommend soft maples. But in our, in the removal, it doesn't recommend, or it doesn't, it's not listed as a tree to remove. So it's kind of an interesting, that is a little dichotomy there, the difference. But it is a soft maple, which is not a tree that's recommended for replacement in the city. Although they look pretty good. I can say that some of them, some of them don't look, I'm not an arborist, but some of them don't look, but a couple of them look pretty good.
Yeah, they are. And we talked, the, the, the biggest thing we talked about was what happens to them during the construction process.
Sure.
Cause, um, I specifically asked about the, the root system, size of it, based on what I'm seeing above ground. And I was told that, that it's gonna be larger than what I'm seeing above ground, which is gonna get into the weeds of where the, the construction would be happening.
That's a true point. That's a, that's a true point.
Okay.
As much as we like the trees, your arborist was right with the construction going around this. I've seen these, one of these. We love to keep the trees and I'm a big advocate of it. But I've also seen construction go around these trees and if they're not properly screened, they will die.
Well, and, and honestly, putting a little orange fence five feet around a tree doesn't.
It's gotta go the drip line.
Doesn't go to what's below gray.
Well, he's saying that the arborist, that the root scope beyond the drip line, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I specifically asked about that, just to know, you know, that species. So that, that was the bigger thing of that we didn't wanna hit this belt and then have a tree die a year later after, you know, everything's in.
Okay. Any other questions for the architect?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that has comments on this building? Okay, so, uh, we're left with a situation where we've got these outstanding issues. Um, but generally, um, the issues that we've, uh, we've raised here over the last several meetings, subcommittee meetings and our meeting in August, we've resolved a lot of this. So our options are, you could give final site plan approval and accept the plan exactly as it is. Or you could give a preliminary site plan approval that's subject to them coming back and addressing these remaining outstanding issues. And there's also the option of just denying it. I don't sense there's any appetite for that right now.
No.
Um, or interested in doing that.
I'd like to move this forward for the comment.
Right.
So I would like to make a motion that we give preliminary site plan approval for the building, except for the issues we've addressed with you, which are on the old building, um, getting the glass windows. We'd like to see what that's gonna look like and the, um, and the, the rooftop. You know, what material that you're gonna use to, um, screen that on the, this is the old building. Okay?
Is, yeah, just on that particular thing, is there, is there an appetite for a certain color? Honestly, we're, you know, we, we could go many different ways.
We want it hidden as much as what you think, you know, we'll leave that, cause you're, you're the architect.
The top of this building is brown.
Your, your mechanical stuff is brown and it builds next to it. Doesn't make a lot of.
I think brown is very, it's, that's.
It's, this is not.
White is gonna stand out like a silver.
What's the stand, what's the top part is, the highest part is brick?
Yeah, that's the, that's the stair.
I'd like to see it the same, as the brown.
I, I think bottom line is, I think the conclusion is, a white screen around the mechanicals, uh, is, is not acceptable. And finding something, maybe it's some kind of, maybe that. And finding something, maybe it's some kind of, maybe that gray or something, or something that's got some kind of buff cover of color in it, that's, you know, something that's gonna be more invisible. And you're the architect, so. Go ahead.
Can I keep, if I miss something, let me know.
Okay.
All right. On the new building, what we'd like to see is the rooftop piece. I would say the direction would be, they, you can't see over and people can't see in. That way, that is, that, you know, make it high enough as.
And no lighting.
And no lighting whatsoever up there. So it can't, it's not visible. And I don't know, I'm, I, I'm with, I'm, I'm a, I'm a little leery on this, to be honest with you. I mean, I still might vote it down. In my personal opinion, we're opening up a can of worms. And, but if you think you can do it, where they can't see in and they, and people can't see in and they can't see out and it's not visible, then, okay, I might look at it. Um, the other one.
This is your, this is your, this is your motion that you're doing right now? Okay.
If you gotta change it and amend it, you guys all.
Oh, I'm just gonna vote against it, but, I mean, because you're adding all kinds of things I don't think that, that we've all agreed to, other than in the old building.
Okay, that's a, that's a fair.
I think we're adding way too many things to a motion to get everyone on board.
You want them to start building, is that how, is that, is that what you want them to build to start building? Or hurting your, their build because we're not?
So the intent of a, of a preliminary site plan approval is it offers the applicant the ability to understand they've got a project that's, that's acceptable, provided certain conditions are met. And those conditions typically, that what's laid out in, in the, the ordinance is it's things like landscaping and, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but there's other caveats that are attached to it. Generally, they're not structural type items that are going to materially change the building. So, for example, when, when the condition regarding the windows is in play, architects explain that there's a lot of different ways to do that. Originally, the, the suggestion was, well, you can't put glass there. Now we've agreed you could put glass there. And we wanna make sure that what he does is acceptable. So we know that he's gonna be able to satisfy our requirement, and it's not gonna structurally change the building.
If, if I could just clear up that point, and you can take it off the table if you want. We'll, we'll put a window in there and then it'll just have, we'll have to deal with it on the inside.
Well, I, I, I think, I think we're at a point where the motion is for this preliminary site plan approval, pending these couple of items, is gonna give you the opportunity.
Sure.
To come back. I think that's the best solution here.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Arnold, what's your take?
Well, I just like to, since you were so kind to offer the window solution, you're not talking about one window, you're talking about all of those spaces.
There were five windows.
There were five, I counted, five.
Five or six windows, two in the end, four in the middle, I think, so six.
Six. So that's, I just wanted to clarify that. I thought it was a generous offer.
So do we need a fresh motion?
Yeah, we need a fresh motion.
I'd like to make a fresh motion for preliminary site plan approval for the Hayok's building, with the condition that the old south building, the applicant agrees to design and install faux windows or real windows to mimic and look like the existing tall rectangular windows that go all the way around the, the building, that will now be enclosing the newly, the loading zone. We'd like you to come back with, for the approval of the mechanical equipment material for the south building. That's screening the, the mechanical equipment on the old building. Matching the trim, or I prefer darker, but matching the darker trim on the old building. With the outstanding issues on the new building, be addressing the aesthetic look of the poles. And what else did you say for the new building?
The rooftop.
Rooftop.
Oh, and to table the idea of a rooftop living area and welcome you to bring that back at a later date. But at this preliminary site plan approval, that is not something that is acceptable to the board.
I'll second. I'll second.
Is there any, there was something I'm missing, I think.
And I'd just like to add one caveat to that. So what I said before was, you wouldn't wanna give preliminary site plan approval to some struck, some element that's gonna structurally change with this rooftop area? That's not gonna, whether you put it there or not, it's not gonna change your building.
No, I mean, we were just, the, the loading might be slightly different for that area.
So build it for that, if at a future date it is something.
But it's not approved.
Obviously, because we have a green roof system, the additional weight for the green roof system is probably equal or more than.
Right. And there was one other issue, the sign prohibiting electric vehicles from.
That has to be there.
Parking down below.
Yeah.
At the entrance of the, but not visible from Hayok.
Yeah.
At the entrance of the ramp going down.
At the entrance to the ramp, it has to say no electric vehicles and it's gotta stay there.
Allowed.
Yeah. You will.
And, and Mayor, are we, are we, with this preliminary site thing that you're proposing, are we agreeing that the, that the white columns are in the opening or something?
No, we are asking the applicant to come back with a, a different design for the white columns.
Okay, yeah. You seconded that, that's all.
Commissioner, before there's a second on the motion, I would ask, although it is preliminary site plan approval, I would suggest that there be a condition for the, I believe there's four total ZBA decisions that need to be made. So that should be a condition as well.
Good point.
You outline them.
And a condition as well, that, that the zoning board of approvals.
ZBA.
Pass, pass the other four conditions.
And what are the four conditions?
Algebraic setback, minimum setback, front yard loading zone, and the loading zone on the north off-street, I believe, is four that we're recommending.
Commissioner Arnold.
And that the owner has today stated that in perpetuity, there will be no signage.
Yes, good point.
All right. So we had, we had the motion and was it your second?
No, I abstained.
Oh, okay. So, so you seconded it?
Yes, I did.
So you've gotta put, did you, you've got that in your motion and you're seconding it?
Amy, do you have that?
Yes.
Okay, good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, you know, you're partway there. You know, actually, you know?
May I ask what the timing is for?
It's the, it's the eighty-twenty rule. You know, you're eighty percent, you're there.
So is this something we might be able to get on the next commission meeting?
Could be, sure. You've gotta, you've gotta satisfy the city requirement.
That's on me to make that happen.
Yeah.
We need to get a rooftop ordinance in place before then too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And to the owner, to, to you guys? To you, thank you.
Thank you.
Just for information, the reason we're doing this building in the middle of this one is to go with the brand of your psychological assumption. We would like to do a net zero building. That's the reason why we're doing the building.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, um, next item is the planning commission will review and make, oh, no. Planning commission will consider the request of the property owner at three seven, three five seven Woodward Avenue for an amendment to an approved site plan for a new paver what material. Eric.
All right. Okay, our next item is three seven, three five seven Woodward Avenue. This is for a site plan amendment for change and requested change in the parking lot material. So the site is located at the intersection of Chesterfield Road and Woodward on the southwest corner. Zoned I-1 institutional, this is otherwise known as the Davison Foundation, development that went before the planning commission in recent years past. The site is approximately four point three one acres. Our updated aerial images now show the facility as was approved by the planning commission. This is one of the appeals requests that were granted regarding the parking layout. And as you can see on the southwest portion of the site, there's a grass area. So this is an area that was under the planning commission's consideration for additional parking that was not necessarily needed by the foundation. And so that was the whole initial approach, was that there was an agreement with the applicant to provide the parking spaces that were needed for the development of the site. But then for the auxiliary or the parking spaces that are on standby, more or less. Those would be considered a grass paper. And so the applicant is requesting a change to the approved site plan to allow those to be the same permeable material as the, the existing parking that was installed to the northwest along Chesterfield Road. So.
Cement?
It's a permeable paper. And we'll go through those details in just a moment. The request was made once prior, and the planning commission was not in support of that. So the applicant is here today to give an update, appeal, to ask for the paving of the, the grass to be papers. So moving forward, the parking lot that exists today, again, it's grass. It's both, or in the rear yard, side yard and a front yard location along Chesterfield. So adjacent to the site is a single-family residential home. This property owner submitted a letter of no objection or a letter of support. So they are not in opposition of the applicant changing the material from grass to a permeable paper. So this is the site plan that was approved. And again, it looks very similar to the aerial with the building that is now existing, the main parking lot along Chesterfield Road. And then here, this is where the approved auxiliary parking lot is located, adjacent to the single-family residential lot, but with a significant amount of tree coverage. That was also part of the approvals back in twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three. So again, this is just to show the updated site plan. The layout remains exactly the same. So the footprint of the parking lot is just, is remaining the same and the only change is that it's going from a surface of grass to the permeable paper. So the curb, the curbs that you'll see in the images coming up will remain the same. It's just a matter of changing the material. So these are some images that were taken by the applicant back in August, showing with a demonstration that the tree coverage along the boundary between the single-family residential lot and the site is, has matured and densified to some extent. And again, the, the adjacent property owner stated that the trees are sufficient in terms of the ability, the ability of not to see within, within the commercial site. And then this is just to show, again, the screening on the property line. And then this is what the surface of the, of that parking lot looks like. We did do a site visit in September, mid-September. And so these next few photos will just give you another sense of the existing parking lot that's in question. So this is the transition period from the main parking lot into the auxiliary parking area. And this parking lot would only be used during events. So the original approvals for the overall site, there was mentioning of, that the parking lot here would only be used when necessary. There is a parking shortage and a variance that was granted. The owner, the Davison Foundation, has an agreement with the church across the street to utilize some of their parking spaces. But again, that agreement is not changing. There's no change as it relates to the variance that was granted for parking. But again, this shows what's existing on the ground in terms of the permeable paper that will be proposed to extend into the grassy area. And this is just a close-up of that material that was considered in previous applications, just to show kind of the zoomed-in texture. But again, it's a permeable surface that's proposed there, so. And then these will just be some different perspectives showing the lot. Here you have some of the existing drainage design. This is at the far back end of the parking lot. And again, the, the barrier with the curb here will not change. It's just the grass will go away, which is what's proposed to the permeable pavers. And again, the screening element between the single-family lot and the subject site will remain. And then these are just some images to show, you know, the, the way that the existing grass is growing to a vibrant green color. But that in close-up images, you can kinda see where there's the wear of vehicles that have been driven on the, on the surface. And then this is just a depiction showing the separation between the parking lot and the existing building. And then this would be like those peninsulas, parking lot peninsulas, that would remain as is with some landscaping and, and tree coverage. And then just to give a perspective of what the material is like from the grass paper standpoint, so you can kinda see that underlying material in circles here that the grass grows through. And again, this is a surface lot that would only be used on certain occasions when, when there's more well-attended events at the facility, which I believe is estimated about two times a year or so. But otherwise, the previous approvals had indicated that because parking is not allowed in a side yard or adjacent to single-family residential lots, that the, the previous approvals would allow for this side of the development to be, to be proposed as a parking lot, but with the grass, the grass pavers. And so again, that was denied upon the previous request to convert it to the more of the, the permeable papers that's before you again today, so. And then just the last few slides showing the screening between the single-family lot. I don't believe there was any letters of opposition.
Can we stay on that? Can we stay on that, that one?
This one?
Nope, that one.
And this is the approved landscape plan.
The approved landscape plan, and I understand this, this went through during COVID and I don't even know how you were able to do things during COVID, but fantastic. But you approved of a landscape plan that would've made this particular building site beautiful in the city of Bloemfeld Hills, and instead, it is an eyesore? It is a disaster? It looks like you, you got your plantings from, from Lowe's, Home Depot, Ace Hardware, or whatever they had outside. I don't understand why a, an organization that is gonna do such good things and put so much money into this building and is going to have his, right there in the city of, of Bloemfeld Hills, right by our sign, welcome to the city of Bloemfeld Hills and this is the first building you see, would ever have landscaped this, when they got an approval for a landscape plan, and there's this one, and there's the other one, with showing all different kinds of trees. There is no way that canopy trees or coniferous trees or any of these things were actually installed at the site. And we can look at the very nice landscaping that separates from one house. But there are hundreds of thousands of people who've driven by this since they have put up this building, were looking at, at Charlie Brown-type trees in front of this building. And the fact that you're coming back in here and asking to have more cement, when, when you haven't put any effort into actually following the, the approved landscape plan? I, I just, I can't even believe that, I can't even believe you would be doing that. It is, not only do people complain about this building and your landscaping and your lack of landscaping, but it's, 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 it, residents in this city have to approve, have to follow through on landscape plans. You put through a landscape plan, you made promises to the city and you have not followed through with that, and now you're asking to have more variances. And I'm, I'm inclined just to say, absolutely not. And, and, and I'm, I just, absolutely not. I'm so, I'm so shocked that you did not follow. It's the first time I've seen your landscape plan. It's the first time I've seen your landscape plan that you, that it got approved by.
Let me, let me propose. So I, I heard what you said, Commissioner. So there's two issues. Well, there's one primary issue, which is whether or not we should modify. Eric, did you have more to say?
No, that's pretty much.
Okay, I don't want to interrupt you if you've got something else. Because I, I want to sort of move this.
Thanks, keep it moving. Do we need to hear from the engineer first, or is there any other?
Well, I, I guess I'd like to just sort of follow up on what Catherine said. So just so that we've, we've laid the, the, the issues on the table. One is whether or not the installed landscaping conforms to what was approved. And I don't know that we've looked or not looked at that. I, I have heard issues about the appearance of the landscaping, but that's a separate issue. I don't want to lose sight of, and it's an important issue, I don't mean to dismiss it. But the, the issue on the table is whether or not we should grant some relief on the, the paver parking. And, and I just want to clarify the issue here, which is when this building was originally proposed, it was proposed with all this parking on the west side of the building. And after, it was during actually the, the, the subcommittee meeting that, that the point was raised that you could not put parking in the side lot, which would have changed the whole dynamics of the building, which is why they decided, well, this parking, would like to have it the minutes, say, two or three times per year. And so we're still talking about two or three times per year. And they were granted this waivers, provided they kept the area green. So that's the reason for the grass pavers. And there was some work that was done. I know there were inquiries made of like Oakland Hills uses this for their parking. We talked with Oakland Hills. And they use these pavers and it worked. And here, you've got that one image that showed the grass all, all burned out. I looked at it a couple of days ago, and I mean, it, it's really healthy. Just so that it doesn't look, it, it doesn't look like that. It looks, it looks better than my backyard. So I mean, it looks sort of like that. So.
What's the reason for the request?
Pardon me, I guess, and we're going to find that out. I just, Catherine had points to make, and I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose sight of why we were here. So you don't have anything more to say, Eric? Jamie?
You manage our refer team on this review, so I'll let her speak to him.
Pardon me?
I'll let you speak to this, but it's really nothing.
Okay, you can say nothing, unless you want to stand up here and say nothing.
As far as stormwater, we always planned on this being paved at some point. So it was designed, assuming that would be paved at some point. So from a stormwater concern, we don't have any. We're okay with whether changes may or may not happen.
This material that's installed now is not pervious, correct? So you had to do a storm system, correct?
There's an underground storm system that was built for the whole property, assuming that this was going to be paved. So the calculations that were made assumed this was paved, not that it was grass.
But even though it looks like grass, I was reading that it's not, it's, it's, it doesn't flow through it.
It does flow through.
Oh, it does.
It does, okay.
Yeah, we use, I mean, these, this product is used.
I've tried to use it many times in our homes, yeah. It, I think it's fantastic.
It's used for like emergency entrances, you know? We use it for a lot of different purposes.
It's expensive.
Eric, what makes these permeable?
Okay. But the new cement is more pervious, impervious than the grass pavers. What's proposed is more impervious than the grass.
Okay, so.
Even though there's plenty of flow built in.
I guess what I'd like to do is, Eric, you can sit down, if you would. Is the applicant here?
Leah, can you explain why these things for the, for the, for the commissioner here, why these things are permeable, why this is permeable?
This, this says, it's sort of an actual permeable aggregate?
It's the void spaces.
Sorry?
It's the sand in the void spaces inside the material. It's more porous. If you do it concrete, you do it asphalt, you do it in the gravel, these pavers. The seams are open as well, so the water can get through into the seams. It's kind of like brick pavers without putting some of that water in between them.
Thank you.
Well, in time, that sand wore away after a big snowstorm or something, and you have all these pockets.
No, you can fix it. These are, the pavers that up front are real, and that area is really nice and durable. But like, I don't put pavers, I don't put permeable crap, you go and replace it. A tile, you know, it's cement, you can just slot cut it out and replace that slack. We assume pavement, so we're good on stormwater.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak?
Yeah, I think one of the things that's probably.
Would you like to come up here and let us know who you are?
Sir. Thank you. I'm Joe Welker, the architect, one of the architects for the project. I'm here with Danielle, who's the chief operations officer for the foundation. So maybe just direct your comments directly, just to address them. I think there was a lot of effort in the landscape. Yes, it was approved, as those drawings show. And it was largely built that way, too. And we know that the caliper of the trees, you know, it's expensive to buy a caliper tree that exceeds four inches. So a lot of those trees are on the smaller side. There was a lot of effort and a lot of expenditure on the soil. And ensuring that there was a, a group of mixes within the soil mix. There was a soil scientist involved in the project. And they were very instrumental in setting up what is going to be a good growing area for these trees. So what we are anticipating, what we came to this commission for in twenty twenty, when it got approved during COVID, was a continuation of that forest landscape that you see with Manresa. So we, we, we understand that it doesn't look like that right away. We do think on year five, you know, in year ten, it's going to continue to grow into a mature forest landscape. The density of the trees in these areas is quite pronounced, to the point where like people wanted, the people planting them were like, these trees are too close together. I think we're going to have the opposite problem. And Danielle and her team are going to have to pick and choose which trees to remove as the trees get bigger and bigger. But we also spent a lot of time looking at the understory. And so one of the things that was important was ensuring that there was limited visibility to this project and site. Now, you're not seeing that now, so I appreciate that you're reacting to that. But with patience and time, I think that is going to change. There was a selection of understoried vegetation that was evergreen, that holds its leaves, and also lower plants. And then there was substantial burmey that was done on the site. I think something that you, Mr. Chairman, had pointed out in the early submission, as a result of Giffords Webster work, was that the burmey was too much, that we burned too high. So we scaled it back a little bit. But that was part of like reducing the visibility to the overall project. But what we believe and what we think is that this is going to continue to grow in as a forested landscape, is an introduction to your city.
Were the calipers spec'd in the landscape plan?
They were, they were, and they were on that, that approved drawing, too.
And what was installed met the spec?
To my understanding, yes, to our understanding, yes, yeah.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
For the calipers, the smallest.
Talking about, he said the, you know, small, bigger ones are expensive.
Imagine, because it wouldn't combine with any of our ordinance.
No. I have a question, I have a question.
So you got a whole ordinance?
I have a question. Was your response that the calipers that were called for on the submission that was submitted to us is what was put in, installed? Yes or no?
That's my understanding, yes, that's my understanding.
And some, some expert opined? Or is it you're just casual?
Who's the landscaper?
He doesn't know because he wasn't here in twenty twenty.
I wasn't reviewing.
So he can't verify that it was.
Who was the landscape architect?
That's my question.
The landscape architect is Michael Volkenberg. And we selected a landscape installer in a nursery, and he went out and picked the trees.
Michael Volkenberg, his offices are in what state?
New York.
New York, okay. And your offices are in what state?
Minor in New York as well.
New York, okay. So we have, we had a landscape architect from New York, a, an architect from New York. And every resident who puts in a building and who submits a landscape plan like that does immediate landscape, immediate screening. And Manresa is, is a site that's been there, I don't know.
Forever.
As long as I can, as long as I can remember, sixteen, hundred, hundred twenty years.
Hundred and twenty-five years.
And, and has thick vegetation, so much from, from the side of the road. I, I, I say that this is what should be addressed, not any more of your, of, of, of your, your parking lot. It should be addressed because you're not a resident of Bloemfeld. The landscape architect who designed this is not a resident of Bloemfeld. But we're stuck looking at an under landscaped building that should never be looking the way it is. And you're concerned about parking and saying, it'll look better in five years. There's not one resident who's built something who doesn't have to, within one season, be screening their building. That, you don't get it, you don't get a pass.
Catherine, can I, can I just, can we take maybe a pause first? And the points you're raising are all important issues. Actually, what each three of you said was important. What was spec'd? What was delivered? And what does it look like today? All important points. What I'd like to do is maybe set those aside a second and address this question about the proposal on the table. If you could explain, what we're looking at is something that, I looked at it, you know, it looks pretty good.
Looks good.
Looks, looks really good.
We both think it looks good, but.
And, and so it looks good. The presumption was, as it was presented to us, this was going to be used two or three times a year. And so we've got a condition where, under ordinance, you couldn't put parking here. You couldn't build the building that you built. And the city gave you guys a lot of relief. I know you worked hard to get an agreement with the property across the street. And we were all working with you guys because it was, it was during COVID. We were doing it all, you know, we were doing our meetings over the phone. And so what you have looks good. You're only using it two or three times a year. Could you explain to us why when we granted that privilege, now you want to make a parking lot out of something?
So I think both of these surfaces, the surface on the screen here and then the surface in the front along Chesterfield, which is the front yard designation, have been in place for a year now. And these photographs, which the Giffords Webster team took within the last couple of weeks, this is probably the best it's ever looked.
Well, and I can tell you, having used this product, it takes a while for the grass to grow through.
Yeah.
And I, and I looked at this, I thought.
The durability, wear, and maintenance is something that Danielle and her team have been seeing for a year. And on comparative basis, this product is difficult to maintain. What you're seeing is the tire marks of, I think, of the mowing machine. But the walking surface is a little bit irregular. And then those, those are, we didn't doctor those photos. Those, that was what it looked like in August, the other photos.
And it looks, actually, it looks better now.
It looks better now.
Yeah.
And I think Eric helped by like zooming in to the reality. So it looks, when you're on the oblique, it does look, and it looks, it stacks up and looks good. When you zoom into certain areas, it is, it can be patchy. You can see the, the round discs, discs, the plastic material.
I walked it, I couldn't see it, but maybe, maybe your eyesight's very fine.
And it depends on when you're going, you know? If you walked it in, in April, it's different than.
No, I just walked it over the weekend.
No, I mean, like, but I, if you walked it in the spring, the time of year, it changes throughout the year. That's what I'm trying to say, yeah.
So, so I just, so getting to the point then. So you're not, you're not permitted to put parking here. The city granted the waiver so that you could build your building the way you wanted it and use this two or three times a year for parking. It looks attractive. And Commissioner Valamas asked why you want to change it.
I think that the grass does always look, as we have those that you saw right now. It does sometimes look like this.
So that was August.
When you drive on it, it does leave untied in marks that takes, what, some time to come off. I think that with a curve around it, you can also see that grass stands out more. Whereas if all of the parking lot was the same material, I think it would be more conspicuous. That space, I think the grass really stands out, surrounded by the curb and the other parking lot, which is ends, in a way that I think doesn't look as nice as having the solid parking lot. The, this, the division between the property and the neighbor is completely obscured. So that neighbor would never see that parking lot. There's in support of the parking lot. So if you're driving down Chesterfield, you know, I think the grass stands out in a way that I don't think looks nice. I understand right now, you've got some lush grass, and you're saying, hey, that looks great. But it's surrounded by a curb, and then you drive on it and use marks. So it is my opinion, and that's why we're asking, is that it would look nicer and it would blend in more without the green grass popping out from those curves.
Can you paint, can you paint the curb?
Yeah, I think it, the curb is what's bothering you, not the grass as much.
But, but people driving on it, do you, how often do you use this? Because you said you would use it two or three times a year.
We don't need the actual parking. We, the issue that you raised was that, we had two issues when we originally proposed the building, was that we didn't have enough parking because the zoning, the law, the calculation was that we needed more parking, and there was nowhere to put parking. So that was really the only place to put it. And when we had come back and asked for different material, last time we aired in proposing a material that was, it was very dark, it was like black, and you hated it. And we were in this room, and you said, like, you can keep your grass or you can, we're not going to prove it, you can come back with something else. And so we said, we'll keep our grass. It's in. You know, we didn't love it. I thought that it would look nicer with the same material as the other parking lot. So I certainly didn't come in here with the intent to upset you or to be continuing, asking for the same thing over and over. Once it was in, I thought it would look nice to have the same material, and that probably came back.
But you do have, we do have one person, neighbor, who doesn't like this. I don't know if you guys saw this.
Yeah.
May I also make the point that if we approve this, then we are setting a precedent that buildings can have a parking lot next to a residence. We're setting a precedent.
Well, that was, I was going to say before. I think we have to consider the residence, this is actually a residential area. And when you have the grass, whether it's always green or it goes through like everybody else, my grass is half brown right now because we haven't had any rain, and I've got a sprinkling system. You have to make it fit into the neighborhood. And I think the grass does that.
Are there other comments? I think the grass looks great.
I would like the operations director to once again tell us how many, you've been in business, you opened your doors about eighteen months ago. How many functions have you had where you've had parking in this space?
We have not had any yet.
Thank you. How many are planned for next year, ma'am?
We have, we have plans yet.
And for the year after, ma'am?
I estimate two or three years.
I'm sorry?
I estimate two or three years.
But none have happened, is that correct?
That's correct, we've been.
In the past or in the next twelve months, is that correct?
So we have not had any yet. It's been nine months, and we've been moving in and slowly opening. We estimate two or three years. And I stand by that.
At three o'clock this afternoon, how many cars do you think were in your parking lot?
So.
Thank you.
As we look at this, just to restate what we have, just so you understand, the option that the foundation had was to build a smaller building. And the city looked at it in, in a cooperative way, looked at it and said, you've said you don't need the parking on a regular basis. So the city worked with the foundation and allowed you to build a much larger building. But under the ordinance, you couldn't. But under the ordinance, you couldn't install parking here. And I think, I don't know what I'm hearing, there might be more acceptance of an ask for this if you were going to use it, if there was some purpose. But just driving, a lot of people, as we look at these, it's not just based on one neighbor because a lot of people use Chesterfield there. They drive down and when you look down, you know, you can, there can be differing opinions on what you see when you see that building. I think there is question about the landscaping and maybe, we set that issue aside, but maybe we can visit that for just a couple of minutes after we come to some conclusion on this. But as you're going through there, it's brown and it, you know, you're passing by, you've got that slight burn. But then, as you proceed a little bit further, you look down there and you see the entranceway, the second entranceway, and you see all that green. And it actually looks pretty attractive. I mean, you see green. You don't even see the white curb. Now, maybe there's some way to, I see how the white curb stands out, but maybe you paint the curb a little. You know, when you're looking down there, if you didn't have that white curb there, you wouldn't even know it's there. And actually, you could almost come up with, having been a part of the commission when this was approved, I think there was a thought that, and it was a suggestion, you were going to have some like big planters there instead of like those fences or those barriers. You were going to have like a couple of big planters. They use them in other municipalities to, I mean, it looked, actually looked, I think, attractive if you had two planters there and people wouldn't go into there. So I'm not sure you've made a case for, let's waive the requirement for these pavers. I don't know, does anyone else have comment? Okay.
That's a beautiful picture.
I don't know. Now, looking at like the landscaping to the left, so, and I guess we can talk about this. This isn't the topic right now. And we're going to have to, we're going to have to make a motion and make a decision. But you were going to say something?
Well, I'm prepared to make a motion.
But I guess I want to, because after you make your motion, we're going to be done here with this item. So I just want to address the other elephant in the room, which is what this looks like. And maybe this is something that the city manager reviews with you guys later on. I don't know that it complies or not. I suspect what you installed may comply. Now, I was here when this was approved and what I remember was, the intent was to make a building that was basically, you lowered the grade and the intent was to make it sort of more, not invisible, but less in appearance. And that the intent was to place a lot of landscaping in there to obscure the building. I remember hearing the comment, you're not going to even see the building. And there was issue with the grading. Frankly, the material that's in that burn, that wasn't imported material. I think that was material that came out of the ground when they excavated the area for the building. Because there was a lot of excess material and they just pushed it up and made a burn. So it's not like there's a lot of specialty material in there that was imported to make the plantings grow. Now, pardon me?
Actually, there was.
Okay.
There was soil brought in.
And there may, there's always topsoil, but a lot of that material came out of the area where the building pad is. That's how you built the berms. So what may need it, you can see it right here. So when you look at those trees right there, it's not really attractive. It looks, it looks sort of scrubby.
They're not screening, they are not.
You know, we're just talking amongst friends here, right? We're neighbors. And so, you're looking at this and you see, you know, we're accustomed to seeing on the ground, people, they put in some kind of wood chips or some kind of, something to make the ground appear better. This looks like, and I understand the intent is they have understory here, but we're accustomed to seeing, people spend a lot of money on their understory and it's really attractive when they install it. And the plantings, and I didn't look at the spec on your plan and what was specked out, the understory stuff, because we don't really pay a whole lot of attention to that. Those trees right there, those look like, those are four inch or five inch trees right there. So, I mean, those are decent sized trees. In Long Woodward, you've got some decent sized trees, but then you've got all that understory stuff.
Looks like a desert.
And it, well, it looks sort of like that. And I know you guys, you spent a lot of money on your building. And you want your building to look good. And we have heard, and this commission has heard, a number of comments about the way that appears. And I don't know if that feedback has come back to you, but over the past year, we've heard on this commission, a lot of feedback about how that appears. And so.
Complaints.
Complaints. They don't like how the building was built, which was one of the reasons why you heard for the last two hours before, I think it was the same architect, if I'm not mistaken. Because I actually said, made a comment about it and he goes, why was the architect? I'm like, oops. So we have heard outside, all of this, this is what happens. It's not just our opinion, it's what the residents tell us in the city. And when they look at that building and they come up to us, whether we're out or whatever, and they know, and they go, how could you allow that to happen? They're just not happy with it. So I don't know if you've heard that feedback, but numerous residents have said that to us.
Well, they're not going to change their building.
So bottom line, yeah.
They're not going to change the building.
So the bottom line, you may be compliant, but we're getting feedback. And you can look at this image and there's probably ways to make this more attractive, for lack of a better word.
Chairman, you were in on the ground level, as was Commissioner Arnold.
I was too.
Yes. And you're saying that, and you're saying that you think that this was compliant to the landscape plan?
Are you talking about the Woodward?
Yes.
No one knows. No, I think the Woodward is very unattractive.
And not compliant, and not compliant, of what you approved of, right?
So what I'm saying, Catherine, is I don't know if what they installed complies with what was approved. I don't know.
Dave does.
Wait, do we know that, Dave?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say that, so I've visited the site many times. And there is a ton of landscaping. But I think where the problem came in with the approvals was just, there's not a lot of evergreen. So these will probably be beautiful canter trees someday, but it never really provided like a screening effect. And I think the planning commission were all used to having this sort of screening effect immediately. So, and we're talking, it would have been helpful to put twenty-five foot trees immediately, a big, big evergreen type trees. And that's the kind of look that they're used to. And that's where I see the issue is. I think that they, I don't know if they complied with the plan, but I looked at the plan. The plan is full of deciduous trees. It's devoid of what is normally expected from the city. So I don't know if it's necessarily their fault, but I do think, I think it's important that you're advising us and that the city would really like this, you know, if you're driving out a little bit, they don't see it. They just want to see big, huge trees. Maybe that's something that they can do to improve it. But I think the amount of landscaping that's there is, it seems compliant. Oh, I haven't taken a think measure out there. But I looked at the plan just to see if, did they comply? There's a lot there.
Okay.
Dave, I agree with you because come winter time, it's going to look like a desert again. The pine suggestion is fabulous.
Okay.
Just as a suggestion, and I appreciate, you know, from an architect's standpoint, you might want to visit with a landscape architect that's familiar with work that is done within the city of Bloomfield Hills. They may have a better understanding of what is trying to be accomplished with that, just as a suggestion. Not a mandate, of course, at all. I think, for what it's worth, I think the building is beautiful. I think, I love the building. But the landscape itself, it just, I don't know that I would go as far as Catherine.
I'm going to go that far, however, I'm not opposed to the building.
Let me finish.
The building, I agree.
Okay. It just, everything looks very small for such a grand building.
One thing I was trying to describe earlier is there was a lot of thought and effort, but I was just trying to communicate that we do think that that's going to lead to fruition. We understand your comments on the evergreen piece. There was a shared interest with that. There are a number of evergreens and they're maybe not big enough. You know, it's present in Long Woodward, but there are more evergreens concentrated in that area that's specifically trying to help the building. So we are thinking that that will evolve.
But I just can't imagine that there's.
Evergreens are one of our standards.
So bottom line is. So bottom line, I know you want to move this thing on. So bottom line is, I think I would echo to what the city manager said. There's a ton of landscaping, I looked at it too. A lot of it's deciduous. Some of the evergreen trees, they may not be the quality you might necessarily, there's, you can have an eight to ten foot tree and they both meet spec, but one is much more intense than another. But at the end of the day, if you satisfied the requirement, we can't ask you to do more. But it's always nice to know what people are saying about you. And, you know, you guys, we're neighbors, and so you may want to just hear that, right? So they're compliant, we think. Dave is, may end up looking at whether or not they're compliant or not, but, yeah, so.
Well, can you investigate that?
Okay. So Commissioner Arnold, do you want to make a motion?
I do.
Okay.
We, of course, are very, continue to be very excited about the project and having a wonderful neighbor. There are concerns that have been expressed. Hopefully, you can take it back and think about what you've heard. But with respect to this particular application, for us to make it a, make an exception and allow you to amend what has been discussed in many details, with many details, over many meetings, I feel, we feel that your application should be denied.
I second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Do you have any comment? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? You can, I hope you understand, you know, the thinking.
Sorry.
Okay. All right. So next is, I'm going to sort of bundle these next two items together. So we've got some ordinances here. And I'm going to just, for one minute, give the background. The background is, we've got two ordinances. One was an application or an ordinance amendment to add specified trees into our tree ordinance where a certain number of large trees were removed from a site. And it was intended to replace the tree cover in the city, the canopy, where someone went through and removed a lot of large trees. And specifically to replace those with oak trees, Kentucky coffee, and there were a couple of other varieties in there. That was one amendment we were proposing to that ordinance. Then there was the ordinance amendment with respect to the plant materials, which we started working on about this time last year. And it was intended to make some clarifications and improvement to our plant materials ordinance as well as add provisions in that addressed landscaping and screening. And so, in that process, you may remember, in October of last year, we looked at one draft and it was decided that that draft needed attention. In November, we had a subcommittee set up. Actually, the mayor at that point, Commissioner Baxter, wrote to the planning chair and said, set up a planning subcommittee, and we did. And four of us worked, four of us, five of us worked on that and came up with language. And we changed it, invented it, and circulated it. And we were at a place that I thought we were all comfortable. And today, now we've got some proposed revisions. And so we've got a couple of different ordinances in the package. And we've not reviewed those yet. They haven't been reviewed by the subcommittee. And so rather than spend time reviewing different versions of this ordinance, which the changes in and of themselves to the first version were pretty substantial, now there's amendments to that. And what I think makes most sense is that we set this aside and revisit the proposed changes to what was agreed to. There were probably six different commissioners that touched what we were originally planning to discuss today. And so rather than review revisions on top of revisions, it makes sense for someone to make a motion, if you're in agreement, that we table this and review these items in another meeting.
Well, you, can I just correct that?
Please.
Before, I'll let you make the motion. Revised it, not corrected, but I think, you said, I think the subcommittee should review the meeting, the proposal and make any recommendations and then bring it back to the next meeting, not have us all review them again.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so you're reading the subcommittee. Okay.
When I say we, yeah. We need to have agreement before we start bringing stuff to this table. Dave?
I apologize for that, but I'm wondering if the tree, Woodlands preservation, that would be good.
No, I think it's onerous. I've built, I've built two homes, I've renovated a home. I personally, I think it's, it's very onerous. You must replace.
You mean the one with the, so if you remember, and I got my email, the original portion of that amendment, we met in December, our subcommittee did. And we voted and agreed, we didn't vote, but there was consensus that it met the requirements and actually, it was Brad and Lauren that wanted to add those two trees in. But then what happened is, we added all that additional baggage into the first paragraph, which I think I laid out in my email, is duplicative and it actually conflicts. And I made some proposals and I think we discussed, I think we discussed that and decided, yeah, we were just going to run with what we approved in December.
I do mind. So I see the two different versions. And I think what the idea was here is that you wanted to make sure that Commissioner Baxter's opinion was included in this. So I still think that you could, you know, this isn't a zoning ordinance, so you don't have to really actually do anything. But I think you could bring this to the city commission and just have.
I disagree.
Yeah, I would rather have this.
It has to be approved by the planning commission before it goes to the city commission.
This is not a zoning ordinance, actually, this doesn't. But I'm saying, I'm talking about the.
Which one are you exactly looking at?
So I'm talking about the iteration that Commissioner, or Chairman Hutter and I talked about. And we just want to make sure that, and this could be not at the city commission. And I think that Commissioner Baxter would most likely agree to this rendition. But, you know, my fault, I wasn't here last week. But I think that intent here was just to make sure.
Well, this was approved by the. Well, this was, this was approved by the planning commission, that one, in August, August 21st, so it's not because of last week. I don't know, I don't know why this was inserted last week. Is this something...
So, okay, let me, let me just clarify. Let me, let me...
It doesn't matter, we can push it off, but I think that it could be solved at the city commission meeting, with the...
It will not be brought up on the city commission.
No.
If I, I'm sorry, but...
You don't like this one?
I'm asking you again, which issue you're...
So, let me, let me explain something.
Tree and Woodlands Protection Agreement?
Let me clear the decks here a little bit. So, we have two items. One is plant materials ordinance, and one is changed tree ordinance. So, the way the ordinance is worked in our city, and actually, under state law, if it's part of the zoning ordinance, planning commission gets involved.
Yes.
The tree ordinance is not part of the zoning ordinance, so the city commission can unilaterally approve that. Now, the caveat I would, I would offer, and I hear what you're saying, Dave, when I looked at this, I saw two different versions. I wasn't sure what to walk into this meeting to even discuss.
Sure.
And so, I don't know if we're all prepared to actually review this now, because I walked into the meeting, when I saw two different versions, I wasn't sure what we were doing. I saw, you know, one version and then another version, and I wasn't sure what we were discussing.
I'd like to give a due deference. I'd like to really put in as many hours into taking the best of the best, and making this really good. And I don't mind putting in another 20, 30, you know, 20 hours on it to make sure this one is good too.
So, to Dave's, to Dave's point, so, what we originally approved in December of last year was the changes to the one paragraph. Subsequently, there was more verbiage added, which is outlined...
I don't know how that, but I...
Sort of shall, we're saying must.
No, no, it's actually, that's not the order.
Is that a different one?
It's the tree ordinance, but I think, frankly, my opinion, for whatever it's worth, is what we've historically done, over 17 years that I've been on this commission, is where we've had ordinances, and I take your point, I think this could get done, but really, from a precedent point of view, what we've done is, the tree ordinance was actually written by the planning commission. So, while, and there was a decision, because we didn't have, the city did not have a tree ordinance, and there was a decision made to put it into the, into the body of the city code instead of the zoning ordinance. But the general inclination is that the planning commission has always reviewed and approved these, and made a recommendation to the city commission, and so, I'm not sure we're prepared...
Yeah, no problem. I mean, this tree ordinance was, the reason why it's back here, to your point, is that there was a special with planning commission members with this tree ordinance. But I can say that, you know, there may be other ordinances that are not zoning ordinances that won't come in compliance.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah, just my mistake.
Yeah, no.
This was brought to you in respect of what happened, the process. And so, I'm sorry about the confusion about these two. I think, it's no problem to weigh in on that, but I do think it's important that the planning commission has understood that there is a city commission policy that the city attorney does review, and actually, everybody that has a hand involved with this meeting, consultants also, have to have the ability to review this. So, this stuff was for the city attorney to review this plant material ordinance, and it is the city commission policy, and for him to opine on it from a legally defensible, and not only of that, but also creating the ordinance, the, creating the regulation with the proper formatting, but it's also his job to look at this, to make sure that we can defend it. And so, that's what he did. So, I mean, but certainly, but if the process is for him to do that, then it should be back. That's no problem, we'll do it in the future. And it's certainly my fault that, I thought we could just discuss it here, but I was wrong.
No.
Sorry, we just got it Saturday. Can, are we going to have a subcommittee meeting then, and so we can further this along? I'd love to get this done.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we do. So, just, just so we, I guess, got an understanding about the path forward. So, it's always been our policy, where the subcommittees have reviewed these ordinance changes. City attorney, up until, up until 2018, city attorney never even sat in these meetings. We would circulate them, I would send them to the city attorney, they would come back with their comments, and we've always listened to the city attorney. But before they go to the planning commission, it's always helpful if we're all on board with the changes, so that we're all on board.
I do know you had a subcommittee with planning commission members, but according to the policy, there's still, and maybe you expand the subcommittee if you wish, but there still should be the city attorney at some point...
But the city attorney is not allowed to substantially change the content of the decisions by the subcommittee.
So, not, so, so what we should do though, absolutely, we've all, I think it's important. In fact, I think my email said, let's pass this along to the city attorney, so that my...
He did.
My, but what would have been the, what we've done in the past, and Mark is sort of new to the process, what we've always done for the past...
Yeah, sorry, Mark.
What we've always done is, if there's changes made, they're circulated back to the subcommittee, and, you know, people look at it.
Did I, Jeff?
Yes.
I was asked, I was given a draft that had language, it was not in the ordinance format...
Right.
And I was asked to review it from a legal perspective and to put it in an ordinance format. When I reviewed it, I had some reservations about the way it was worded, and so, I made some changes to it that I thought made it more enforceable, and more of a regulation as opposed to a series of recommendations. However, when it was presented to you for this evening, I presented the original version I was given from the subcommittees in ordinance format, as well as another version with my changes to it with redlining, so you have them both. I wasn't trying to hoodwink or surprise anyone, I was giving both. So, that's what I was asked to do, that's what I tried to do. And I guess I'll do that.
Okay. We're all on the same page.
We should have just had...
We appreciate the redlining.
Okay. So, I think what we should do, since this is on the agenda, we're just, we're just going to, we should have a motion to table this.
Okay, Connie was on the, or Craig?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to table this issue until it can be considered.
Okay.
And I'll second. And what about the city commission? I mean, this could all go in front of, it's all planned to go in front of city commission.
Well...
It'll get tabled.
The plant material ordinance is part of the zoning ordinance, that needs a recommendation from the planning commission before the city commission.
What about the other items?
We'll pull up, we're going to pull up.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, okay, great.
So, did we vote?
All motions are going to be voted.
We did.
Okay.
For the ordinances from the city.
It was unanimous, we voted. Vote, everyone in favor of tabling?
Okay. Yes. Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, aye, okay. Any opposed? No, okay. Good. And...
There's actually two agenda items, do you want to...
Oh, I did it for both. I sort of do, I assume they were combined.
Amy, are you straight on that, though?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want us, well, wait a minute. Mark, do you want us to do both for the record?
I just wanted to clear, it was a little jumbled there.
I'll make one just to make it up. So, assuming, Craig, you did the first one, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Then I'll do the second one, and I'll say, we should table the planning commission-proposed city code change to section 22, article two, tree and woodlands protection, until the subcommittee can review it, bring it back to the planning commission to make recommendations.
Second.
Okay. Is that good, Mark?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay.
Good deal. So, are there any other comments before we adjourn this meeting?
Let's hope not.
No, we're good to go. Thank you.
Okay.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Signing this one.